Good evening. Welcome to the Pittsburgh Board of Commissioners meeting. I'll call this meeting for September 8th to order and we'll start with a moment of silence. Please join me.
Thank you.
Mr. Commissioner, will we leave some pledge of allegiance?
Will everyone rise for the pledge?
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which is ours, from the nation under God and in whose soul but of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have the agenda and the consent agenda before us. Any changes in either of those? Motion to approve the agenda?
No.
Mayor Prokhorov, thank you. Second question or votes? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. A motion approved the agenda.
So moved.
Mr. Your votes? Thank you.
We only have a second.
Mr. Foley, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
We have an information item this evening of the ABC Financials. Jamie?
Hi, I'm Jamie Fiocco, Chair of the Pittsburgh ABC Board, and thank you for giving me a few moments today to just give you an update. We do have our general manager, Scott Cox, with us, Larry Pietto, and CB Stewart, who are also on the board as well. We had our end of the year, our fourth quarter, we sent a check on the 25th to the town of Pittsburgh for $21,238. That totaled $77,657 in quarterly distributions for the year. In addition to that, we have sent a check for excess working capital, $79,359, and thank you again for letting us retain 40% of the total number, which was 132,268. We will keep 40% of that amount to put towards a potential additional store. So, thank you very much for that. We also, in the course of the year, donated, or didn't donate, but distributed $7,400 to Pittsburgh Police Department and Chatham Alcohol Education, achieved a little over $10,000. So, if you have any questions, please do let me know. I very much appreciate you allowing us to retain 40% of the excess working capital. The second store started out beautifully and is meeting or exceeding our weekly goals, and we had people camping out overnight, where the ribbon cutting and for the grand opening. So, we're very happy with how that's progressing. And we had a modest profit in addition in our first six weeks of operation, which was where the fiscal year ended. So, any questions or concerns?
Good job. I appreciate you. Keep up the good work.
Yeah, well, all a great team, wonderful staff, and GM Cox is doing a great job. So, thanks again.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have a ceremonial item. Is anyone from Duke Energy here this evening? All right. Well, they gave us $25,000 for a police vehicle, and we appreciate it. Up next is Citizens Matters, and we'll start with the managers update.
Excellent. Thank you, Mayor. So, we met with the folks of Robeson Walk today, worked out an agreement, kind of verbal agreement on where the Greenway is going to go and how we get that done, so we can have the Greenway connect from downtown all the way to the plant. So, now we just need a final easement language change, and Mr. Messick has worked on that. Robeson Walk Park, that design process, and that, obviously, we need to figure out what that name is, the process, but that is ongoing. We had our first beauty engagement period last night at the Summer Fest. We had 140 adults and 40 kids give their input. So, I think that was a great turnout for that event, and we got some great feedback. Skate park grand opening is the 20th of this month. I believe it's from 10 to 12, but we'll get an invite sent out to you all for that. We are still working, as you all probably know, on the Sanford Road project, trying to get that more safe for pedestrians. We are running into an issue on the lighting package. We originally had the design approved. We had gotten a bill or a budget for that. We paid that, and then now the budget has gone up about five times. So, we are trying to figure out a solution to that at this moment. We met with DOT again today on some long-term changes that we may do. So, I'm gonna try to put some kind of plan together for you all to look at for October and November. And lastly, Colby has a quick couple of words. That's all I got.
So, of course, the town continues to grow, both in size, but also in staff. Very happy tonight to be introducing one of our newest hires, Mr. Robert Douglas, who is our new and first IT Director for the town of Pittsburgh. He comes to us from Carboro. He's been there since 2004, background in Parks and Rec, but then moved over to IT, and has been there for just short of a decade, has been responsible for large-scale, like, application development across their fleet and implementation, oversaw their fiber network, and was the team lead on the library complex up there. So, he did graduate from Clemson, so there's any USC fans in the room, I'm sorry. But, Robert, if you have anything you want?
Yeah, maybe not so sorry these days. We're not looking too good. But, Mr. Mayor, commissioners, I just wanted to thank you for giving the opportunity to come and bring my knowledge and experience working for the town of Carboro, from starting out calling balls and strikes with their Little League, to, you know, helping work a $40 million project, building the new library over there. I'm excited to work for the town of Pittsburgh. It's a really great growing community, and I just can't be more excited to start working on improving things as best I can. So, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Glad to have you.
I was gonna give him a month, and Colby just said throw him to the...
It's Thursday, right?
Yep.
All right. Up next are Mayor and Commissioner updates. So, I will start. Summer Fest, end of Summer Fest was last evening, and that was really a great event there in the Pop-Up Park. So, appreciate everybody that put that on. On August 14th, we had a joint meeting with the county leadership, our quarterly meeting there. So, lots of good cooperation with the county there, good things happening. On August 19th, I did a tour of the Invicta Water Facility at Kerry's Water Intake on Jordan Lake. So, Kerry is doing another pilot project like we were, but a much more scaled-up version of it. So, we're able to see there, and continued good results from that, from that. So, it's really good to see. And then on August 28th, I did the Chamber Bus Tour, so throughout Chatham County, through Pittsburgh, and took 54 at least people through on that tour. So, that was really good. And we have an EDC meeting coming up on Wednesday, or next month. I'll be there, either way. That's all. Mayor Prokhorov, then, Walter?
Yes, thank you. Actually, we had a meeting, Central Pines Regional Council meeting was held on August 27, 2025. The new chair is now Brian McAllister, who is Mayor of the town of Salma. So, he certainly is the one that presides over those meetings. We had a presentation, a really, really good presentation on the proposed North Carolina Children's Hospital by Andy Willis, who is the Executive Director, Executive Director, Chief Planning and Development Officer. Basically, everyone knows that that new hospital is proposed in Apex. So, it will be approximately a 500 acre, I'm sorry, 500 acute care head beds with 100 acre campus, which will include ambulatory center, research and teaching, as well as facilities for the family, because they have something like the Ronald McDonald House. So, that is really looking good, and it is proposed, and Duke and UNC will be working together on that. And that will be basically the first children's hospital in this area. Also, I'd like to invite everyone to the Chatham County Fair, which will start on September 18, 2025, and that is the 75th year for the Chatham County Fair. So, I want everyone that will to come and also go ahead and bring your flowers and your plants that you've grown and your vegetables and put those on the exhibit. You may get a blue ribbon. I got a blue ribbon last year. So, I invite you all to that. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Boss?
Yes, thank you. So, from the last County Climate Advisory Committee meeting, there's really not much of immediate relevance to report, but I will take a moment, as Commissioner, to just request that perhaps at the next or following meeting, we receive an update on the Hillsborough Street Improvements Project, the NC DOT widening and bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure project. That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Farrow?
Nothing to report, other than I also attended the joint meeting with the county also. So, that was very enjoyable. Hopefully, we can do that a little more often. Not more often, but occasionally.
Got it.
That's all I have.
Mr. Foley?
Yes, I was on the same Commerce, Chamber of Commerce bus tour, and it was fascinating and fun. As Mayor Schiff said, there was approximately, there were 50-plus business leaders on the bus. It was a great time to interact and exchange ideas. We stopped at Mosaic, Chatham Rabbit, in Silo City. We stopped at the Bynum Bridge, and we had a great presentation from Chatham Arts Council. We stopped at the Alpaca Farm, which used to be a llama farm. We took a little short tour of Chatham Park, and we stopped at the plant also. So, it was a rather eye-opening exposure and a unifying trip. So, and that's it for me.
Thank you. Mr. Your votes? I was at the ABC Board meeting on August 28th, and it was all good news. They've already given a report. I have nothing to add to it. All right. Thank you. All right. Up next is public comment. When you come up, please state your name and address at the start of your comments. There's a time limit of three minutes, which will be displayed on the screen. In the interest of time and fairness, it's the board's policy not to respond directly to comments during this period, but staff will follow up as appropriate. And I apologize if I can't read your name. I'll do my best. We will start with Betsy Kraus, and up next is RG, please.
My name is Betsy Kraus. My address is 680 Lyken Trail, Pittsburgh. I want to acknowledge all the effort the people in this room represent. Thank you for being here, for taking the time, taking on the challenge of creating the future of Pittsburgh. According to the agenda, there's going to be an overview of progress on Chatham Park and considering a conceptual plan. We have a conceptual plan. I'm not sure that we need another one. We already have a plan for a city of 30,000 people, and 5,000 acres, where we have four village centers that will give folks an opportunity to bike and to walk and maybe not to drive their cars everywhere. There will be public transportation connecting the villages. So, the village centers will be easily walkable, and then they can catch a bus or other public transport to get around the community. There'll be lots of native spaces with easily accessible facility to all the residents and to residents broadly, more broadly of Chatham County. It's a great vision. Now, we need to see how that concept is going to happen. We need details, not another concept plan. I've given you a map with the kinds of details we could have. It includes roads and buildings, even a school. We need to see that the libraries and schools, parks and trails, roads and bike paths work together to achieve the overall goals that Chatham Park has promised us. Chatham Park shared that particular map with the wastewater people. Why didn't they share it with you? The other thing missing in the existing proposals is the required financial impact analysis. Isn't that kind of important? To know what the town will still, that the town will still be viable in the future when repair costs start to become an issue? Maybe they need more time, time to prepare that. What's the hurry?
Thank you. Up next is RG, followed by Carol Hewitt.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Raj. I scribbled it. That's why. Last name's Potalia. My address is 425 Moon Meadow Lane, Pittsburgh. I would like to mention to the commissioners pretty much a word Betsy said, that I believe simply renaming the small area plan, a concept plan, and not really addressing some of the issues that I have noticed in my review, which I'll provide to you by email, I don't think that's necessarily progress in this regard. And I certainly think we need to factor in more room for public review, and maybe other boards reviewing this more. I'm not sure how that process will play out, but those are the two main issues I'd like to raise. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Carol Hewitt, followed by Jonathan Hoover.
Just want to mention, before you start the clock, there's a few people at a statewide bike transportation conference today that couldn't be here tonight, and I hope they're going to bring back some of the knowledge that they gained. So, but my name is Carol Hewitt. I live at 424 Johnny Burke Road, Pittsburgh, and I have looked at this new plan that you're going to get proposed to you tonight. It was in your agenda, and I have a couple of concerns, really just two. This conceptual small area plan of 5,000 acres, later, you would get to see section design plans with more details, but those would be tied back to this now inflexible new conceptual plan. So, we already did the concept phase. We did that back with the master plan. If we're going back to the conceptual phase, that's public meetings, that's a whole new thing. That's like starting over. So, in this new concept, you also lose a lot of power and local control. There are fewer checkpoints for town leaders to say, wait a minute, hold on, we need to reconsider. There's less chance to negotiate better results. Like, how do we respond to flooding when you clearcut 5,000 acres of forest? Now, what happens in a small area plan? You could say, we'll approve this, but we now know we need these stronger stormwater controls, just for example. If you get a big conceptual plan like this, these negotiations are front-loaded, and the details are easier for the developer to refuse to do later. What about public input? It looks to me like this new conceptual plan gives citizens less opportunity, and including those that are going to be living in Chatham Park, say, in the process. In the original system, each small area plan comes with public In the original system, each small area plan comes with public meetings and hearings and neighbors have a chance to shape their town. So what's the biggest difference? It looks to me like less detail about what they're really going to build here. If in fact they build it and if unless they sell it and somebody else builds it. There's less detail about exactly where schools go. Where would there be a library? There's less detail about where would a park be? Out on the edges or would there be little neighborhood parks? Will it will parks be actually walkable? You know, a conceptual plan says there should be schools. A detailed plan says there will be a school here. And it's that level of detail that we need to we need to know. So there's just less accountability. I feel like you're giving away the baby with the bath water. I'm actually working on a chart for the planning board next week and I'll give it to you as well, which shows old plan, new plan. You know, what's the pros, the cons, like, how do we compare these? But so far, as I'm going through it, it doesn't look like a better deal for the plan for the town at all. It's kind of like putting pearls on a pig. It's still a pig, but now it doesn't want to be bacon. It wants to go out for a big night out on the town. And that night out on the town will be at our expense. Not at Tim Smith's or Bubba Roll's or any other developers from Chatham Park. It'll be us. They'll be gone and we'll be the ones dealing with miles of new roads, traffic snarls like there was on Friday here in town. Possibly flooding and paying for all the new services that the sixty-five-plus thousand people are going to need.
Thank you. Time is up.
It's not pearls on a pig.
Tiana, followed by Liz Collington.
My name is Tiana Thurber and I live at one twenty Hank Street. I want to say, I hate to feel like I'm reading a script, but this is the best way to express my gratitude for yesterday. So I would like to take a moment to thank the town of Pittsboro and our law enforcement team for their support yesterday for the Summer Fest event. We had such a wonderful time and it couldn't have happened or would not have been possible without your help. From safety to logistics, your partnership made all the difference. And on behalf of the Pittsboro Business Association, I want to express our deepest gratitude. That event is a great example of what happens when the town and our business community come together. And it's why I'd like to take a minute to talk about something else that deserves your support. The Welcome Center. As a small business owner, the support I receive from the Welcome Center is invaluable. My store is tucked away off of Main Street in a very, you wouldn't know it was there if you didn't know it was there. And yet, thanks to the Welcome Center, shoppers are directed right to my door. I know I'm not alone. Many businesses depend on the visibility and promotion that the Welcome Center provides. But they don't just bring us foot traffic. They provide information and statistics that help us grow. They act as a hub for the Pittsboro Business Association, even hosting our event planning meetings in their space. They welcome us, they connect us, and they strengthen the bridge between visitors, businesses, and our town. Now imagine how much more they could do with the town's support. They could help fill the gap we currently have in social media for the town. They could expand retail offerings that showcase Pittsboro, like postcards, t-shirts, and other items that promote our town. And further amplify the events that bring so many people here. Other towns around us already invest and support their welcome centers. And Pittsboro deserves the same. We have something truly special here and by supporting the Welcome Center, we are investing directly in our businesses, our tourism, and growth of our community. Thank you for your time and thank you for your partnership.
Liz Collington, followed by Steve Wolfert.
Is this recording because it's very hard to hear people at the back?
It is streaming and recording.
I just need to be loud.
It should pick you up.
No, I mean, it's just you can't hear people at the back. I'm going to start my stopwatch because you don't have it up there. Because I don't want to get cut off. All right. My name is Liz Collington, three ninety Rocky Hills Road, Pittsboro. Tonight, you're supposed to get an update about Chatham Park's very large South Village Small Area Plan, which has still not gone before the Planning Board. Our concern is that you could be asked to approve an upended and unsuitable new process, which would also be an end run around the Planning Board, to supposedly make up for the plan not meeting requirements. But you may not be told that this is the reason. The specific requirements are to provide the more detailed planning that was lacking in the earlier master plan and for a smaller area. Such a plan should include potential actual layouts with actual location of land uses. So that all the different aspects of the proposed development and the terrain are connected and can be properly assessed in advance. For instance, how steep are the slopes of designated park areas? Do the main through roads have relatively limited access or a lot of driveways, side streets? What could be walkable from what? A proper small area plan should answer a long list of questions, but also provide enough detail to raise other questions. The plan that they filed in December can't tell you any of these things and is in many ways only a tweaking of the master plan. And between its large scale and the lack of detail, it's simply not adequate. Even though Chatham Park investors agree to this process and the requirements in return for its massive rezone, I urge you not to not allow these established requirements and processes to be upended. It would make the future expansion of our town even more unpredictable with less oversight. This proposal of unknown origin would mean labeling this huge plan as conceptual to make it easier to approve with smaller design plans later, although the requirements for those are vague, not equivalent, and may not be subject to the same review process. In addition, it doesn't guarantee that deficiencies will be addressed in future. While the plan may be called conceptual and lack detail, much in it could confer approval of things that also lack context, such as sites for parks and who pays for what parks. Possibly not conceptual at all, a twenty forty-five road plans hiding in the appendix that could be even more disruptive to the rest of us than Chatham Park's road projects to date. I would urge you to stand firm, either reject this nonsense and require Chatham Park's immediate obligations or wait until this flawed plan comes to you officially. We know that Chatham Park has detailed layout plans for all the residential areas in the South Village. We've seen their maps, shown them. And they showed one to the planning board, although you couldn't see what the what they were showing. If you blew it up, you can see. So what if plans change in the future? Would you rather approve an understandable plan that could change in the future or just approve a blank sheet and hope for the best? I'd also like to point out that no other developer gets to rewrite the rules because they haven't completed their homework. Thank you.
Steve Wolfert?
Hi, I'm Steve Wolfert from Forty Store Roads. Thanks for all the work you're doing. I'll start off by saying I'm excited when people figure out better ways to do things because I think there's a lot of better ways and I think for me, the initial pitch I heard about in Chatham Park was, you know, developments coming to our county. If it wasn't this developer, somebody else would be wanting to build here because this is a cool place to live and I think it sounded like the concepts I was hearing sounded like a good plan. I haven't followed things as carefully as some other people. But I started having questions and wanting to know more. And so I think people raised a number of concerns. For me, I think my concern might be a little more process oriented in that I've been coming to some meetings. I listened to a presentation with the Planning Board. I heard people ask questions there, all the planning board members, and I don't think they got clear answers. I heard new terms in the meeting and I asked planning board members after, like, what? I hadn't even heard that before. I know that's the first time I've ever heard that myself. Like, I don't know what that design stage is or things like that. So I think my biggest concern right now is I think there's an opportunity for a cool way of doing things that's going to be a best-case scenario. But the more people I talk to, and even people I've talked to on this board, county commissioners, nobody really even seems to be all that clear about if we approve this part, what does that lock us into? What are our, how do we make sure we're actually getting what we think we're getting? And I don't think everybody even has the same idea of exactly what we'd be getting. When people ask questions about density or some of these other things, you know, how dense is it going to be? Are there going to be little village centers? Are they, are those going to move? What's all this going to look like? I mean, I think people have already asked a lot of those questions tonight. So I think my suggestion at this point would be that each of you ask yourselves, how clear am I on what we're doing here moving forward? And what we have in place to make sure we're getting what we think we're getting? Maybe even make sure there's a more common vision than there may be of what exactly it is. Or is it going to be the cool thing? Or is my idea the cool thing different than your idea or how flexible is this? So I would just think with a decision this big, it'd be great if people could put something together so that ordinary members of the public like me who are interested in following this could check in and see, okay, wait, I can see what we've got laid out here. I can see what we'd have in place if it starts to look different. I can see what the accountability mechanisms are or where people can modify things. And if new information about new ways of doing stormwater or doing electricity or something like, how do we implement those so that this is going to be as good and up-to-date as possible? So that's, I guess, that's my request that somewhere that could be easily accessible for people to understand kind of where we're moving forward here. Thanks.
Thank you. Up next, we have a presentation on the Pittsboro Town Hall feasibility study. Siobhan, take it.
Evening. Nice to be with you all tonight, talking about this important town project. I'm here with Siobhan Moore, his partner here at Frank, Frank Land Design, local civil and landscape architect, land planner. So we were hired by the town to take a look at the parcel of land where the current Little Tykes Learning Academy is and sort of study it and understand what is possible on that site in terms of the new Pittsboro Town Hall. How do we, how do we flip the? You got it. You can flip. And yeah, so here's our courthouse, Main Street Station. It's a little washed out. Hillsborough Street, East Street, Thompson Street. So this this parcel of land right here is really sandwiched in two, in between two of our major thoroughfares being East Street and Thompson Street, and it's only three or four blocks off of Hillsborough Street. So we're going to have folks coming from all different directions. There's really no back to this site. You can sort of, we debated on who's coming from where the most, but it is a central location. It has walkability to downtown. It has walkability up to East Street. Really think it works well for its intended use to put a rather large building on what, what, and I'm sure you're familiar with Little Tykes, what the development is there right now. Next slide. Little, little more zeroed in image here. Salisbury Street flanks one side, Farrell Street the other. Here's Thompson and here's Small. And we're in a real transition zone between the residential area. We have some really sort of sweet small-scale residential houses here, historic house here. We have some residences. This is more of a vegetated site. And one of the things that, and we have, there's Main Street Station. So we're in this sort of transition zone, which we'll speak to a little more between sort of commercial and residential. And what we're trying to do is respond to both with the architecture and the development and the site layouts, respecting the residential areas, trying to keep this a passive corner to where we're not really jammed up against these small houses with a larger building. The site does slope from east to west as being the low point, which Garrett will talk about in some of the site development. But that that provides sort of a little more zoomed in context of what, of what the parcel is. I think it's around two and a half, three acres, something like that. So next slide. Just some images to familiarize everyone here. This is looking from the corner of Salisbury and Farrell, looking north. You can see it's a rather gentle slope. There's Thompson Street in the background. Next slide. This is a view from the corner of Thompson and Farrell. This is a very prominent view. Thompson's probably our most heavily traveled street that surrounds the site. So this is a high-visibility corner. And so we paid attention to that and you'll see in the site development. Next slide. This is from the low part of the site on Salisbury, looking north. Self-explanatory. Next slide. And this is, and this is some contextual images that we think are important. Like I said, we're in a, in a transition zone between residential and commercial. Some very simple, small-scale residential houses that flank the site or just within blocks with a mix of wood siding, brick, shingles, metal roofs, very simple, traditional, you know, residential scale architecture. And we're butting up against that. So you know, one of the questions we've had is how do we do that effectively? And respect what's there while we understand we're building a large, modern building that will have a lot of traffic coming to it. But this is, this is the context we're working with. In addition to, next slide. Some of our commercial areas with Walgreens just down, just down the street a block away. Small B and B is very close, which is more of a residential-style architecture. We have the auto body shop and the laundry just down the street with the car wash and then the community house just up the street. So we're really in a transitional zone that it becomes important how we insert our building into this context. Next slide. We'll come back to some images, but Garrett's going to take you through sort of some of the site analysis of what's there and what's proposed.
Yeah, thanks, Taylor. So I think you did a good job with explaining the visuals from the impact of the neighborhood and kind of explaining how this site exists, kind of almost on like the downtown fringe area where we're, we have a lot of residential homes that are adjacent, so be insensitive to those. And just to kind of take a deeper horizontal look at the site. I think there's a, there's a lot of opportunity because if not now, but in the future, there's tons of pedestrian connectivity to downtown. There's existing sidewalks along Thompson Street. There's proposed sidewalks along Salisbury Street. And in the future, Small Street connects to the plant where we have a very nice amenity with a greenway. So there's a lot of connectivity here from a pedestrian level that this site wants to capture. As well as sometimes when sites are developed, you can take some of the cues from the existing development to understand how the site works and a lot of times those work well. So taking some cues from the existing daycare just to understand some site topography, how it positions itself along Salisbury. Something that Taylor showed in one of the images, most of the time roads have a lot of slope to them. We have a great opportunity here where Salisbury is nearly flat, almost to where it gets to Thompson. So there's a lot of opportunity where we can place a building kind of up along that commercial corridor and not necessarily have to work and mitigate a bunch of grade change. And then next slide. So interpreting a lot of that site contextual kind of moving from north to south. We obviously know that Thompson Street is a huge pedestrian connectivity opportunity and one of, one of the most traveled corridors. But as Taylor also mentioned, this is also the site. But as Taylor also mentioned, this is also, the site is also going to be accessed by East Street and, and folks coming from the road. And how do we position a building that's, you know, responds to that commercial corridor, Thompson, but is also sensitive to the neigh, to the neighborhood? So some of the big things were making those connect pedestrian connections north. And then as you move on the other side of the building, having a more civic, civic space with a public plaza, which we're going to show some, some images of later, but kind of having some different materials and, and entry points for, you know, the courtroom areas versus kind of the staff entry areas, along with a lot of opportunity kind of for hangout or dining spaces with public spaces for staff along Farrell Street, as well as covered canopies on the north and south position of the long administrative wing on the right side, which Taylor and Siobhan are going to go in, in more detail with. And then just, you know, trying to respect general circulation, provide adequate, you know, fire access. And most importantly, you know, we're controlling, you know, stormwater runoff and, and providing a nice, you know, entry ways from either portion of the site. And, and, and also with the residential component at the corner of Salisbury and Farrell, trying to create some kind of passive area that, that tells us who we are. You know, we're Pittsburgh and we were thinking some, maybe some signage and some, some artistic installation. But also respecting that corner against the residences. We think it could be a, a really special place, especially, you know, thinking about folks coming from East Street to the town hall. But also, you know, having multiple entry points to the site. No.
Couple of questions for you. Three, three. The first one is there are some wonderful trees on that property. Are you planning to keep any of those?
Which ones? I mean, are you talking about some of the ones in the front where the parking lot are? The signatures? With this plan, we, we were not. I think there is maybe opportunity at the front corner is the vista you showed earlier.
Northwest.
The northwest corner on Thompson. We could definitely look at preserving. And I, I don't think, I think that would be a nice opportunity to preserve, preserve a tree and, you know, I think a message board.
I'm sure Paulie just speak to that. This is conceptual. We can get a survey and locate specific trees and we certainly would work around if it made sense.
That'd be great.
Yeah, so we're, we're not that far down the road, but we certainly would like to look at that in more detail.
Okay.
And we did take that into consideration, trying to, you know, there's a lot of built area already on the site with the Little Tykes building. And so you might see some similarities. It's, it's in a generally a similar footprint to where the other building is.
I'll, I'll just follow up on some of what Garrett said, just a little more detail. So here's Thompson, here's Farrell, here's Salisbury. We've got an entry off of, off of Thompson where you could come in here. We've got an entry off of Farrell Street. And then we've got a, an entry off of Salisbury Street. But the, the way this breaks down is we have this ink and this little entry lobby here. This represents about 15,500 square feet. And it breaks into sort of three main masses. One being a one story, we call it the government wing, which is where a, a room like this would be where, where town council is held. Mayor's office, public restrooms. We've got a public entry lobby that you can enter from Thompson Street if you're walking. But if you come in a car, you actually have a drop off line along here. That's a covered, there's a covered canopy here that stretches down. You'll see it in the, in the images. And then you have, this is a two story, we call it the office admin wing, which would house all of the public departments and things like that. So this is around 4,500 square feet of the 15,500. So there's three main parts to this building. The one story government wing, the two story admin wing, and then the sort of covered connector which links the two. So three main sort of masses, if you will. And like Garrett said, there is a public plaza right off of the government meeting room. And it really works out to where it's possible that you could have a meeting and really have, have this whole building shut down, the, the, the office wing. So you, you don't have to have folks wandering into, you know, the more town oriented parts of the building. And we'll, we'll go through the floor plan, but that's, that's the main idea behind this site plan. And the slopes down here, we've got a little water retention area down here. And, you know, there's opportunities for some outdoor, you know, sort of informal outdoor seating areas, lunch areas a, a, along this, along this, this part of the site. So with that, next slide, I think we're at the floor plans with Siobhan.
Sure. Ms. Foley, did you have some, a couple of other questions?
Yeah, I can wait.
Yes, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. So as Taylor was describing, we took, we had several meetings with the town staff to identify what the needs are for the new town hall building. I mean, obviously we've had some of those conversations before, but this is a new, fresh look at it. And we're, we were excited to get new information from the town, given that, you know, they have anticipated growth over the next five to 10 years and beyond. And so we worked with them to identify what those needs are and then sought to arrange them in a certain way that kept the areas that were needed to be accessed by the public easily accessed by the public and clearly given a direction how to get there within the floor plan and a way to then secure the other areas that did not need to be accessed by the public. And so as Taylor was mentioning, it kind of formulated itself, all this information from the town, kind of created the plan that you're looking at here. So the wing that is to the left, as Taylor said, is a one story, what we're calling the government wing. And that's the legislative wing. And that's where your council chamber is located. That is where then your antechamber would be, at the mayor's office, public restrooms. All accessed then by a corridor that kind of wraps the council chamber next to the lobby. So the public lobby then is what connects that, that government legislative wing to the administrative, excuse me. And that lobby fronts both Thompson Street to the north and a covered walkway to the south that connects to, to the parking areas. And then to the right side of the plan, you have the administrative wing. And that's where we have the various town departments. These plans are color coded, it's a little hard to see up here, but within your prints, you might see that there's a number of private offices. There's 17 private offices on the first floor. The next slide will show the second floor too. Another 17 private offices on the second floor. There's a bay, several bays of open workspaces too on the second floor. There are assembly and conference areas. So as I said, there is a chamber, a council chamber that would seat roughly 100 guests as well as the chamber DS to the front of the room. There's several conference rooms throughout the building. One that can seat 12 to 16 people. And then on the second floor, even larger one that can seat 20 to 24. There are, as Taylor said, there's this footprint on the first floor is about 15,500 square feet. The second floor is just the administration wing, which is two story, and that's 10,500 square feet. There's a number of staff support areas. So we have work rooms, storage rooms, a large break room that all the staff can gather in. We have public spaces, which are really just very green in the printed plan. It's the lobby and the corridor that surrounds the council chamber. From that lobby and an additional kind of waiting area, there are two check-in spaces where the public can meet with, with town staff. There's an intake room for anybody that needs to speak with the town staff. All of that, beyond that point is what's secured. And so, and as well as some public restrooms that are off the lobby. But beyond that, it would be staff only unless brought back. So within the building, we've got the administrative staff. We have engineering, finance, human resources and planning departments. And, and if you go to the next slide, you'll see the second floor, which is predominantly office space. So there are some support spaces also sprinkled within there. A large conference room facing out toward Thompson Street. And in the middle between there's, so there's corridor space that wraps around connecting the various offices. In the middle there, there's a zone that has, that is open. And that is an open work space area that we see having a large skylight above it to bring daylight to, to the workers that don't have a outside office, an office along the outside perimeter. And that would add another roughly 12 workstations. It could be more if they were smaller workstations. So this is how the building developed over time. And it made a lot of sense to us and we met with staff and reviewed it and, and it seemed to fit their needs as well. The next slide.
Yeah, one quick.
Yes, sir.
15,000 square foot on the first floor, does that include the government wing?
It does.
And 10,000 on the second floor.
10,000.
Sorry. Okay, okay, thanks.
It's about 26,000.
Okay.
And so as, as that became kind of clear that we're going to have this separation of this government wing with the administrative wing, as well as some precedents that were shared with us from the town. We looked for other examples and here's a few. So the two images on the right are Wendell's newer town hall. And then some other images that kind of showed that a, a more kind of touching on Pittsburgh's more rustic side and agricultural rustic side. And looking at inspiration from other types of buildings that, that had this offset of maybe a one story structure with a two story structure adjacent to it. So that started to inform what became the massing of the building. And Taylor will walk you through that.
Which one was Wendell?
The images on the right.
I believe that town administration toward Wendell liked it. The concept where you could see it's sort of similar. There's a common lobby with the government section on one side and a administration on the other. So it's, it's similar in that way. The architecture that we're proposing is a little bit different, but these were, these were images that town shared with us and talking about what were some pros and cons, especially at the Wendell.
And can you identify the ones on the left?
This was just an image that we liked. It's, it's actually a government building. I don't know exactly where it is, but this was, this was provided by the town, I believe, as an image. I don't know exactly where that is. But the one that we took the most cues from, so we had the floor plans and the tour from the town is Wendell. Can you go back one slide or two slides? I want to just, real quick. So, yep. So the way this works, like I said, if, if, if there's an actual event or a town council meeting, and, and by the way, this is not a sloped floor. The, the, these chairs can be moved into the storage room. So it's more of a multipurpose space. The public plaza is right here. So you really have this sort of public whole zone here. And with these secure doors that Siobhan mentioned, this can really be, this, this portion can be secured off to where this can just function on itself for a night meeting or something like that or, or a weekend event. And this is, we consider this a staff entrance. This is a break room. So this is more staff amenities down here with a staff parking, parking area down here. And then upstairs, and then here's the elevator. And for anyone in the public who wants to go up, they'd have to be either escorted up or brought through one of these stair, stairwells. So we're going to go to sort of what this looks like in 3D. That sort of gives you a basis from a floor plan standpoint. Next slide. Yeah, so we started out with just no, no material, material. Allow the just sort of massing. And like I said, there's sort of three parts to this. The one story government section, the two story administration area, and then this third sort of piece, this canopy that connects the two between them. So you get these sort of plays of one story, two story massing. You can see that we're working with a gable structure, really sort of addressing the residential aspects of the site with, and you'll see the materials we're proposing in upcoming slides. And then this more sort of modern, more, I guess, a little more progressive side of the government legislative wing. But again, sort of tied together with this, this is the public lobby that's in it from Thompson Street. Here's the vehicular drop off. Here's the public plaza. And this is that staff entry we're talking about. So this is where we sort of started. We're trying to be an evolution of sort of the design and the ideas. Next slide, please. Won't spend too much time on these, but you get a sense of scale. This is really scale and you can see we're thinking large windows. This would be the view from Thompson Street. This would be to the top and bottom floor. Those are the large conference rooms for staff where public, the public can be brought into these. It's sort of a prominent feature on the corner of Thompson and Farrell. This is a view of the drop off area, the public plaza. Next slide. Okay, so we'll start talking about maybe some materials. The way we see this, and it's starting, you sort of see more detail as we go. So this is the entry off of Farrell Street. Here's the entry off of Thompson. This is Thompson. So you come in and you have a little bit of a, you know, I don't think we need a lot of stacking, but you have the opportunity for a couple of cars to be here, UPS truck to pull over and run in. But I mean, you can immediately get out, you're under, you're undercover. You come into this public lobby. And then you have walkability on this side on Thompson where you could also enter. And we have some staff parking over here, parking space for the mayor. His office would be right here. But again, there's this public plaza right off of the meeting room. We sort of hardened the site along the streets and the parking is in the interior of the site. So you're not, when you're riding by, you're not looking over cars to the building. Next slide. This will be the view as you, your car coming up to be dropped off or just to park. You can see large expanses of glass, the public plaza, some nice landscaped areas. This canopy that sort of separates first story windows from the second. Next slide, I think we have a night shot. You can't really believe it, you can't really see this. Next slide, wish it were darker in here. Here's a, here's an interesting view along the government wing. This public plaza here, you can sort of get a sense of scale. One story here, two story here. But this canopy brings the two story scale down to more of a human scale. It's not just a two story wall that we're, that we're navigating as we enter this building. Next slide. A little more zoomed in view. We have some benches out here for, you know, waiting if someone's picked him up or, you know, could be a place to sit, have a phone call if your staff. Here's the public sort of corridor, public zone beyond the. Slide. This is that staff entry with the staff amenities, break room, staff parking lot. But just again, a sense of scale, the, the, the sort of two story, it's a large building. But how, how do we break it down to where the scale maybe works a little better for the site? One thing we have, we're showing sort of, this would be lap siding, metal roof on the gable, similar to the residential. metal roof on the gable, similar to the residential architecture. We do have large expanses of glass. This orange material we see as a clay tile, not brick, but terracotta. We think it's a it's a very durable material, but it it has is rooted in place. We have clay soils. We have a lot of artists who work in clay. We think it's a good tie. It's similar, you know, to to brick, but it's a sort of modern interpretation. It's an old material, but we that was that's sort of the tie to a to the place and some of the history of Chatham County, Pittsburgh with with a lot of our pottery and things of that nature. Plus, it ties in with some of the materials of the of the of the housing. That that's the thought behind that. But on the two story side, lap siding, gable roof, metal roof, things like that. Next slide. Here's a view from Thompson Street. Ominous corner, there's a there's a staff sort of outdoor meeting lunch area, whatever you mean, sort of a flex space along Thompson. Here's here's the here's the sidewalk where you could enter if you're walking into town hall. Here would be the council chamber right here and the entry off of Thompson back at the backside of the of the of the image. I think that's all the images. One more, maybe?
Am I seeing windows behind council dais?
That is right there, yeah. Here was be a view along Farrell Street. Again, sort of play of accent materials of the accent terracotta against the lap siding. We had this large sort of indentions emphasizing sort of this. These are those nice public or staff and public conference rooms. Next slide. One more, there's there's a view coming off of Thompson. And we had just looking at some different color options. That's not important right now. But that's that's the that's the evolution of the feasibility study. Nothing set in stone. That's sort of overview from a site, building plan, three D elevation idea. And then the last slide, we did have a professional cost estimator. Put together some numbers, which we can take.
So as Taylor said, we worked with a professional cost estimator that we've worked with for, oh, a couple of decades now, almost. And he looked at the building, the proposed building, the proposed site, and priced it as though it were being bid today, right? This this represents, if it were to go out to bid in today's market. The future market is hard to determine. We do have recommendations for things like inflation and escalation, depending on how far out the building would be. But this represents today's market. The building construction is a little north of twelve million dollars. The site work is roughly about one point five million dollars for a total construction estimate of thirteen point eight million. Little north of that, a cost per square foot of five hundred and forty four dollars a square foot. That is in keeping with what we have seen for public buildings being built today. It is wild to us, as I'm sure it is to you. But but that is where the current construction market is is for today. There is a separate line item here for adding a fire sprinkler. Now, a sprinkler system is not required by code. We can, we actually designed the floor plan you saw to compartmentalize the building in a way to keep it safe and building code without a sprinkler system. But that might be something that the government prefer. It's a protection for your investment. And so there is a separate line item for that at three hundred and twenty seven thousand, twenty eight thousand dollars. So some other things to note about this estimate. I've already said it's today's construction market. It's not a future construction market. So it does not include any escalation or inflation. It does include a five percent design or estimate contingency. And that's because it's very early. This is very conceptual design. And the idea being that in the future, that contingency would be reduced to zero as the building design finalized, got tightened up. There is no construction contingency included in this number because that's not the number a number a general contractor would give you. That wouldn't be part of their bid number. So we always recommend that owners hold a construction contingency. And the state recommends around three percent for new construction, typically three to five percent maybe. But so that's not included in the number here. It also doesn't include any removal of rock or in suitable soils that might be present. And we don't currently have a geotechnical report that shows us what's happening below grade. But we do know there's a building on that site as as it is right now. And so we're hopeful that while that's a very common thing to encounter in Chatham County is rock below grade, we're hopeful that that wouldn't be something encountered here. But you definitely know more once the geotechnical report was done. So it does include a chamber dais. It does not include any furniture or fixed seating within the council chamber for the visiting public. So and throughout the building, it does not include furniture. Because that is something that typically provided by your contractor. We did include an allowance of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for an emergency generator. Assuming that's something that you would want. It could be something that is easily taken out, though. Appliances are assumed to be provided for separately. And like I said, the fire sprinkler is shown as a separate line item. So we welcome any questions you might have.
I know you probably have two more.
First of all, Taylor, this is exquisite. I love it. Really do. You're you're an artist. I I know that the 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 two story building, half of that roof is south facing. Is that correct? Is that my orienting that correctly?
That's a that's a north south orientation.
Right. Yeah. Back end that I can't see.
The one story is an east west orientation.
Right. Dude, can we get a cost analysis for solar on that?
Sure.
And also, there's a building on east in East Town Drive in Chapel Hill, whose walkway is that type of structure with the the canopy?
That key in progress. I think I know that.
Yeah, and it's all solar.
Yep.
So that would be something I'd be interested in pursuing. And the other concern is is flooding. I know we have a retention pond, but that's downhill from the one story side of this building. Are there any plans to, I know you're you've already thought about it, but can you help me feel safer about it?
As far as like the.
Thompson Street floods every major rain event.
Here comes down through South Street.
Just west of where this building is. Yeah.
Yeah, the the size therefore position a lot higher in the landscape than the spot right there in Small Street where it's flooding. I think, you know, with this project, we are after and attenuating any kind of additional flow that we're going to add to that one. So we're not making it worse. And we didn't get it exist today. I think the floating with Thompson Street is an offsite issue. It's not something that can be solved. This like we definitely have all all our intent to not worsen any types of issues with the flooding there. And I was looking because of the elevation position.
Okay, that's all.
You're going to you're going to be well outside.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Sure. Yeah, I noticed a lot of south facing glass. And I'm be confident that's going to increase the cost of cooling the space. So it'll provide some benefit for reducing heat and heating costs in winter, but.
We were proposing overhangs over over windows as well, sun shades, things like that.
Good.
And some of those big indentions written in that push in.
I saw those to the north, but I didn't see that this out.
Yep. Just go back if you want. Go back, go back. Go back.
There's a similar indent to the on the north side, on the south side.
There is six or 10 feet from the north.
But there's the south.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
So it's a big and then we've got sun shades above both levels of vision glazing.
Oh, good.
And then back at the back at the government, that that whole thing shoved back under that canopy. That canopy does provide solar control for that glazing and sun.
Very good.
So we did take that into account.
And the lobby area for the council chambers wing.
That is that's yeah, that is actually what you're looking into. But that is.
She's inverted shades. It looks like like vertical louvers or something.
On one end, but there is that that vision glazing is under the canopy and an overhang of the building. So we said, I understand what you're saying. We have in this early design, we've started to think about those issues. There's further development.
Thank you.
We've been thinking about.
Very good. And thank you, Commissioner Foley, for your concerns about flooding and and tree preservation. There are a few specimens on that site that I think are probably worth taking a closer look at.
Absolutely.
And I confess that I've not looked very closely at them with an eye to preservation. But the more interesting thing in my mind is what I always call the terminus of the rail line. Adjacent lot. We're still trying to work out ownership with the rail company, I gather. But I don't think that's due to any shortcomings on our part. I think they they're just not giving up the title. Is that right?
Still working on it. Yes, sir.
But that's a that's a very interesting area. And I'd love to see some thought put into some kind of tie.
This general area that's somewhere in. It's too far.
Too far.
Right here.
Yeah, I I'd love to see a greater relationship between between the facilities, not just the parking, the facilities and that that site.
We've identified that as a spot for that reason, but we don't have it yet. So but you're but I totally agree with you.
It's an opportunity.
It is an opportunity.
Yeah, we we don't have a an inventory of the trees down there. We really haven't even been maintaining it. But the neighbors on Small Street have, to the best of their ability, been maintaining it the past fifteen, twenty years. And before that, it was another neighbor doing that out of goodness of their heart and neighborly self preservation, I suppose. But anyway, it's it's a very interesting area. And perhaps there's some worthy specimen trees in there that that we could uncover and and take care of.
And with our, when you do get a true survey of the site, detailed survey, I think we would go out and flag certain trees that we won't identify. If we certainly can work around them, we would would do that.
And and I don't think there is any real depression there right now. So we could significantly move or change the shape of the stormwater basin to reflect some kind of continuity or relationship there.
Yeah, we start where's that involved? It's it's probably further left.
It's right there. It's a draw.
Yep. It goes under the main street.
A lot of separation. Okay. For the combined of the study, we kept it on site. But you're right, there's a lot of opportunity where we could because there's there's a there's a lot of different little I don't want to say ecosystem, but I'm sure there's some like little wave of areas in there that we want to preserve, but also to basically tie it together. Because, you know, we're kind of at this harbor bay right now. But there's definitely a lot of opportunity to share and have a relationship with some kind of passive space at that corner. Because, you know, everything, everything's pointing towards downtown. It's the pedestrian connectivity. So it's going to be kind of the thing you see as you as you come down Small Street.
Thank you.
It'll be it'll be it'll be another visual entry point with the site once once it kind of work out the the title ship and everything else.
And that's what you see with this. This we kind of see this. It's not, there's not just one. This is a filter. You're going to people are going to filter into this site from all sides. So we're.
It's true. Every side is an entry.
Yeah, it's all an entry in it. I think it it attempts to address the specifics of the site while still sort of open face toward downtown, which a lot of people who walk in here. So it's just trying to balance a lot of needs. Yeah. And the vehicular entrance or exit, the drive as it's positioned right now onto Salisbury. I I'm almost wondering if we could just lose that because as I try and think about avoiding headlights in the neighbor's front door, it's kind of hard to move it closer to the corner. So, you know, maybe two vehicle entrances is enough.
Maybe you're we thought about that. That's something we would like to study. I don't disagree with you at all.
Okay.
And then we plan for fire truck to be able to access Farrell Street. The accessibility of a fire truck would allow that access.
And along along those lines, this is a really kind of a sacred part of the site along these these nice little residential house. We're trying to try to get away from there and let respect their space. And and that's there's this theme site plan that sort of does that. But we we had three or four schemes, one where it was slammed up against Salisbury. And we had it, we had five or six. But this is the one that sort of made sense when we talked to the town. Everybody agreed that that getting sort of pushing it towards Thompson made the most sense.
Yeah, yeah. And and maybe just thinking a little bit differently about the parking area so that it's it's less of a what more of a space that one might actually enjoy walking through. I'll just leave it at that.
Most of that, I mean, it's tricky balance. Do we want to say the trees adjacent to the site or create space on size?
While getting our required, while getting our required.
Yeah, it's a balance of, yeah, creating meaningful, nice usable spaces and, you know, preserving ecologies.
Do we?
It's a plan now.
Do we need to revisit the required minimum parking areas?
I don't mean that. We we would want to have a conversation. One thing we're thinking is that maybe we could have the parking spaces dedicated to the admin. Because these are used at different times primarily, like we're here at six at night. Maybe the government wing, those those spaces are shared with the daytime use so that we don't have to build as much parking area. So we've talked a little bit about that, but I do think it would be a conversation for the future of here's what the ordinance says, is there a way maybe to reduce it?
So, yeah.
Well.
Eliminating minimum parking standards is is on my long term to do list, but I'm not going to.
It would it would stop right now.
I'm open to it. And as regards the idea of solar on the roof, thanks again, Commissioner Foley. Can we look to some products that are building integrated roof replacement? We're thinking about a metal roof already. Let's just think about.
And and you've got a we're proposing the government wing as a I mean, it's a low slope, but it's a flat roof. So you have a whole five thousand square feet of facing directly south for that for that application.
That'd be great if we could drop the cost of the roof by using the panels as roofing members. That one building I spoke about in Chapel Hill was thirteen thousand dollars a year in electrical cost savings, thirteen thousand. And that's half the size. So substantial. Those are just off the top of my head right now. I I think I have some other thoughts that are spaces are parking spaces, are there?
Maybe, I agree.
Okay.
And we we were right under the minimum. We were like only two or three spaces above that required. So there's not a lot of extra spaces because initially we did have some thoughts and some planned kind of connectivity as well as trying to pull some of that open space out into the parking lot and kind of divide that massive. asphalt, but it just put the same plans, you know, required work spaces and all the elements that we needed to into the plant.
We anticipated that comment, though.
Yeah.
What's the capacity of the meeting room?
It's at least a hundred.
I think, I think it's.
Upwards of that.
I think we got, we show up, a hundred and ten seats outside of the, outside of the dice.
Yeah.
And those, again, it's it's not a slope floor, and those can be put in the storage room for different configurations.
Well, this is a town question, staff question, will you have town vehicles parked there also during the day, during the night? Something to consider.
Maybe a few.
Right.
There would probably just be fleet vehicles, but Parks and Rec will be at Raffey, Public Works there, inspections, Public Works. So yeah, not, probably just a couple fleet vehicles.
Okay.
Thanks for the opportunity to work on this, it's exciting, and uh if anyone has any questions, you can.
Yeah, I got a couple. On the Salisbury Street entrance, a lot of people use that street. People coming from town, Salisbury, make a left right into that parking lot. I I don't see why we should take that away, that's just my opinion. The uh second story building, if you could go to that picture on the, I guess it's the north and south end. I'm a little concerned of the uh, to me, that looks like one of our conceptional fire station entrances right there. It looks like a a roll-up door there.
Oh, maybe there?
Yes, on both ends.
We can study that, it's a, it's a, it's a.
Just my comment, I know we're doing conceptual drawings and things with the fire department, and it really looks like a uh ready for a fire truck.
Okay, we can, we can look at other ways.
Five others, but I think maybe uh we could do a little different with some windows there, hopefully, and.
Sure, we'll study that.
Well, I like the design, I like the design and moving it up toward Thompson Street in the uh where the uh daycare is now, is a great idea.
One that I had from from this view as well is if we can get the sidewalks back off the road, that's a common length of myself and others that walk along there. If we could, some space between the sidewalk and road um all the way around, I think, but like a little separation from the uh.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
Maybe street trees.
Yeah.
The current site doesn't have a whole lot of trees on it.
Just a couple biggies.
There's only like three.
Yeah.
This this will be a good opportunity to kind of reforest that site in terms of street trees, park a lot of trees, and trees along the perimeter.
Yeah, and um I recognize that I'm talking about something that adds to the cost, but uh uh modeling good practices with stormwater, uh like some rain garden features throughout the parking lot, uh that that'd be cool. Just to see what, what's that gonna look like, what would that cost?
You can add some of those street bits to the house, suspend the system.
Here we go.
Or you can actually feature some water in those street levels in the ground, so it's pretty cool. And it's a proof, it's not just a rain garden, it's a proof, a stormwater management system, so it's not so much that actually creates your storage, uh that kind of a parking lot side of the street trees.
Thank you.
Inclusive. But yeah, just just a soft on some of those parking lot edges, it would, it would make all the difference.
Do want to make one note, with this estimated price, that is not included design. So all in, this is probably sixteen million, which is about four million over budget. So we really needed a building that costs ten with maybe spending thirteen when you have furniture, design, uh site and cost. So we're already three or four million dollars over budget, um and we haven't even done anything yet. So that's an important thing to think about, too, as we start adding X, Y, and Z. Uh we really need to cut the square footage down some, probably the design, cut that down. But we we are going to get our financial uh analysis done, waiting on a date when we can get that to see kind of what the projection is on what we can afford with the new rebound numbers in. Uh but my guess is it's still going to be around fifteen to eighteen million of debt service. And you've got a, with that, we got to build this, we need space for a police station, and we got to build a fire station. So there's the badness.
We can park a fire truck here.
When he says that, I'm like, okay. It'd be dual function. So we, we've got some hurdles ahead of us, and our timeline is tight.
One other question, with the sprinkler, does that reduce our insurance considerable? To add sprinkler to the building?
It should reduce it, but I don't know how much.
It would.
Probably.
Not much.
That's, I don't have the answer, I can try to get it for you, but.
I don't think so, ain't that needed, uh it ain't gonna be three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars saved per year.
That that cost of five hundred and fifty square feet, like what are some comparable things that you've seen at that cost recently?
Yeah, we've had, we've had a number of bids just recently. It was a different construction type, though.
We've not built, built a bid at type two B building, that's a non-combustible construction in a while. This is, I could get you some recent comparisons, this is coming from our cost estimate, we bid stuff around the state daily, but it would be on a comparable, if you want a specific project, let me do a little research, but that's a, that's a current bid price, public bid price in this market from a cost estimator who does this daily across the state.
It's it's specifically, he's looking at this region, right, and the the triangle region. Um he's familiar with what different regions are seeing in the bid market right now. But even even so.
Is that your question, is your question, what is another project or like another building type be comparable? I mean.
I think just like, yeah, what other similar, what other, any other, you know, town halls that have been built nearby or municipal commercial type thing?
Let us get back to you on that specific question, um but that price is 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 what the he sees as the current construction, and that that per square foot price, that's, it's not just building, it's building plus site, that's all it. It's the site included, so the, just make sure it's both, and then and then you just divide it by the sixteen thousand five hundred, or whatever, sixteen, yeah.
Fifteen.
Fifteen five hundred.
Yeah.
Or sixteen five.
Yeah.
So.
I have one additional question. The photo that we're looking at here, what type of material, can you just remind me of what type of material?
Two-story, that would be a combination of the the gray is, the gray area would be lap siding, it could either be natural wood or or fiber cement, depending on preference. Um and then the the orangish material is is a clay tile, terracotta, uh thin veneer, but it lasts forever, a lot of times you see clay tile roofs, but this is a, this is a clay tile in a vertical situation. The same material as brick, but it's just, it's about an inch thick, brick orders of notch.
Building would be gone and those tiles would still be there.
Because if we got a fire and those tiles would be there.
And the roof you're anticipating would be.
Same as in metal.
Okay, all right, thank you.
On the two-story section, one-story section would be a single, some kind of single plywood.
It's a further complicated, if we make the building much smaller, we're gonna run out of space sooner than later. So this was, this was matched pretty close to what we need in the next five years, and then with that space on the second floor to, yeah, to add, uh yeah, ten years, and then the space on the second floor to add workstations, that would get us through probably to twenty-five. But hopefully by then, local government and providing service will look a lot different, you won't need as many people.
On some of those adjacent sites, if those were ever required for any reason, maybe some outs, some annexes that could be constructed with future needs, but.
Flying buildings.
John, I hear you say that the second floor could be uh maybe a phased approach where, maybe I didn't hear you. Were walls perhaps?
The whole door.
Or open.
Nobody does have.
They looked at that.
Already saw the open program.
Yeah, the open, and that could be then workstations we own there, we could put in walls later, but um they looked at doing some phasing, leaving some some spec space upstairs, and I think it only saved us one point two million. And by the time you came back and built all that back down later on, you'd probably end up spending three times that.
I'm assuming.
We saw that with the Wendell project, um they left, I think, four thousand square feet open, and the the numbers that they had to budget to activate that space uh was pretty astounding compared to what they spent to build the building in in general. So the the savings just weren't, it makes it makes sense.
It's cheaper to do it at the beginning if you can, we could shell the space, but it would probably, it long-term, it'd be more expensive, but sometimes you have to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, uh yeah, we'll do a ten-minute recess, come back. You know, let's just say, come back at seven forty-five. Fifteen minutes.
Yeah, that's great, huh? It's good.
Yes, motion, motion to approve a short recess of fifteen minutes.
Second.
All's in favor?
All right.
No question, pay for this?
That's later.
Questions?
So the, if there is a disagreement or if there's, talk about the U D O again and how that plays into this. I just want to be clear, how does the U D O play into this agreement? Is it, when there is nothing defined, we revert back to the U D O, is that?
Yes, sir. If there's an element that we're reviewing in a site plan and it's not covered by either the the additional elements and we have a standard on it. Well, greenways, for example, specifications for greenways, how thick the pavement should be, we would look at the town's standards for that.
So the, these elements don't, the greenway is not in those elements, right?
The elements.
Then you refer back to our own U D O.
For the specs, for the.
Specs, okay.
Greenways are in public facilities, though, I believe.
They are.
Requirement of them.
The number.
The elements. And it's, it's also, there's more detail given in the small area plan. And then, which we'll talk about in a little bit, the section design plans have even more detail than that. So, preliminary plats, the review process for preliminary plats, that's not covered anywhere for Chatham Park, so that's something that we would look at the U D O for, as another example. So 2015, a lot of the basic zoning approvals were done. So this was the land use plan map. The yellow is residential, orange is residential mixed use, red is mixed use, blue is research and development. And the purple are the activity centers. This was identified back in 2015, knowing that it could be updated with additional plans, such as the small area plan. That can supersede what was already approved in 2015, in the elements, in the development agreement as well. Everything north of 64 Business East is the North Village, which I said is about 2,000 acres. Everything south of 64 Business East is the South Village, which is approximately 5,000 acres. So like the North Village, that received small area plan approval already, the South Village has not yet. Here's an example of how the plans have changed slightly since 2015 to 2023. The small area plan, you can see the sections, boundaries have changed and the uses have somewhat changed. The activity center has more defined boundaries. Overall, it's, it's pretty similar, though, from what was identified in 2015.
So, the master plan that was agreed upon didn't have these details, is that correct? That the, the south, the North Village supplying.
Did have some of them. So there's a, the original land use map.
Right.
Which was on a couple of slides ago. That also includes a permitted table of uses. So just like we have in the U D O, all of the uses that are allowed in each section, that was already decided back in 2015. So I'll explain a little bit more in some upcoming slides with the, the purpose of the small area plan. But it's just to give us a little more direction in what we should see development look like in the future.
The south.
Kind of like a town's land use plan. And here's the South Village. On the left is what was approved in 2015. On the right is the draft that's on the town website currently for the South Village. So again, you can see some changes. Pretty similar, though, overall. Going to the purpose of the small area plan. These bullet points are taken from the master plan and the small area plan agreement. So this was already decided on being the purpose. First is that the smaller plans shall reasonably reflect the anticipated needs and services for the development in that area and the methods proposed provide the same. The smaller plans shall be acceptable to the town. The intent is for the small area plans to contain more specific information about proposed development than what is included in the master plan. And it's also that smaller plans will not contain as much detail as you would see in like a site plan or subdivision preliminary plot. That's more site-specific. And that's typical for conditional rezonings. When y'all look at a conditional rezoning, which you've seen many of them, unless it's just one lot, you typically do not see site-specific development plans at that level. You have an idea of what they're proposing, the uses, the general locations of them. And then staff at that point works with the applicant at an administrative level to put the design together based on all of our standards. So we look at our U D O and our specs, and this is, I'm giving an example outside of Chatham Park, but when the C Z is done, the developer has some more direction on what they can do. Then they move forward with the more detailed plans. That's when staff usually gets involved. And you have the administrative level preliminary plot and site plans. So the site plans don't go to the town board at all, that's town staff that approves them. Preliminary plats go to you, but it's an administrative level. So it's kind of like checking the boxes at that point. So the small area plan should be somewhere in between what you would see the master plan level in 2015 compared to site-specific level. And a small area plan may include one or more of the 27 areas identified in the master plan. That sentence is taken from the agreement from 2015. And the small area plan is also a legislative process for review and approval as determined by the town. So it's discretionary, similar to a conditional rezoning.
So these, this is an agreement between the town and Chatham Park that was done in 2015, is that correct? That, those, that language that we just saw?
I don't, I don't think it's accurate to call that an agreement.
Okay.
It's legislative policy.
Let me, Ben, can we talk about that for a minute?
Sure, yeah. There you go. Here's copies. It is the Small Area Plan Approval Process. And it was deliberated and, and passed by two of our current members in 2015 before I joined. I'm sure that Chatham Park investors had input on its drafting, but it is legislative, it is this town's legislative policy.
So is there something specifically different than what's on the screen? In this document?
The one or more, I think of more as an interpretation of the language in here. And I, I think it's, it's. I think if this board pressed for an interpretation that was more in line with emphasizing the detailed and multiple small area plans, I'm pretty confident that any court of law would stand with the town's interpretation rather than one or more.
When I refer to an agreement, I was talking about the original one. So you saw on the screen, there were two dates. There was an original agreement. And it has an ordinance number, if I remember correctly. So it was an official agreement. It was updated for the, to include the process for review, and that was done more as like a memo. But this is like a, this is, this is basically retyped, but the original that has like the.
You have the same document?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So this is a, someone typed this up. It's not the original document, which I don't have those right in front of me, but I could share them with you as well.
I would really appreciate it. I think it would also be very helpful if it was actually on the website. Because the document that I have is in my personal files that was derived from the website before the website was rebuilt. I don't think this document is on the website. And I've heard rumors that it's been modified or revised, and that's very concerning. The memo that I have came under the letterhead of Roger Walden, who was our acting interim planner at the time because Stuart Bass had just recently left. So.
Yes, we can put that on the website.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Whatever version you're working off of, and let's make sure it's the same one that I've got.
This is critical.
Thank you.
Because there's, 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 on one side of the coin, I have this vision of what the South Village should be. On the other side is an agreement. And it's critical that we understand if the agreement on the screen here is inaccurate in agreement. Well, I think we need to honor the, the original agreement, whatever it is.
No, I, I, I certainly want to stand up for Teresa Thompson. I don't think there's any disagreement about the accuracy of what's up here. I think that one or more, that phrase, I would question that because that is not emphasized and not explicit in this document that I've just provided to you. The document that Commissioner Farrell and Commissioner Baldwin voted on in 2015.
Just to make it clear, that bullet is word for word what's in the agreement, but the, I guess.
Some pages.
That's, that's word for word, one or more.
The first paragraph on page three.
The document says, "A small area plan application may include one or more of the 27 small areas identified."
Exactly, right here.
Okay.
And I think, I think the, the
Good.
Understanding, the interpretation of that is Chatham Park Investors wants to bundle a couple of sections that are side by side to submit under one small area plan, that makes sense, but.
Sounds like the spirit of it.
I'm sorry.
Certainly sounds like the spirit of it.
Spirit of it, indeed, yeah. It, I don't think anybody, I don't, I don't know, Commissioner Farrell, Commissioner Baldwin, when, when you were voting on it, did you contemplate that they would be tossing in every single section for the South Village into one small area plan?
John, with due respect, 10 years ago, I'm sorry, I can't remember, but if you can remember what you did 10 years ago.
I hear you. I hear you.
I'm sure.
Yeah.
No, I do not. Yeah, there should be minutes of these meetings. All these meetings were, all these meetings that you had, there are minutes. We can refer back to the minutes of that if you want to find out this, that, and the other. Now, as for the additional elements, that goes back to a small task force that was actually, or a group, a committee that was organized, of which myself and Michael Fioke was that. And those elements definitely came from that committee. And then we presented that to Chatham Park, because initially there was no additional elements in them, in the plan at all. That was something that we deter, that we discussed as a committee and came up with and presented to Chatham Park so we could have a way of looking at things to make sure that everything was going to work the way we want it to work. In reference to the town and the development. So that was something that was not in the, was not in there.
Okay.
But again, there are minutes of these meetings, and we need to do that, certainly, and I appreciate you, Teresa, for doing all of this, to go back to those particular minutes and actually review that.
How many small areas were in the North Village? 11?
Twelve or 13 by my count, because there's some uncertainty with the way that the sections were drawn, whether or not it was, it was something like 11 A and 11 B.
Yeah, originally 11.
Yeah.
But, but with the sublettering, 11 A and 11 B.
Yeah, both. And, and, and in no way this is a statement of support for one large plan in the, in the south, but when you have 11 sections in one small area plan in the north, you somewhat set precedent there for at least 11.
I objected at the time.
Yeah, and I think this one is 16. So anyway, for what, for whatever that's for.
Sorry to interrupt you.
No, not at all.
And this is what this.
It's important. This is important.
We can talk more about the purpose of the small area plan. I think that topic will come back up again throughout the presentation, so. And there's more I can say to it as well. The requirements for the small area plan, there's three slides on this. First set of requirements, basically a lot of existing conditions, topography and such. Next slide. What's actually required in the small area plan? When we first receive it, we go through the whole plan and basically check the box if these items are in there or not. And if they're in there, we say yes, and that it's a complete submittal. We're not saying at the time that staff thinks it's sufficient, or, you know, that we're approving it, obviously, at that time. We're just saying like, yes, these are in here. And with it being a 5,000 acre small area plan, staff did, does not determine that we have the level of detail needed on all of these items. So that's why in reviewing the small area plan with Chatham Park, same thing with the North Village, staff's recommendation to the town board is if you are going to approve a, a large area for the small area plan, staff recommends for it to be conceptual. And there were some lessons learned on the North Village in the process of reviewing the different plans as the development occurred, and that's why staff recommends these additional steps for section design plan approvals to mitigate that and, and make it better.
Can we talk about the word conceptual and what that means in a practical manner? Let's say Chatham Park wants to do one thing and the town says, no, where does conceptual go? Where does that fit in this process?
Conceptual is the same type of interpretation that you would have for the town's land use plan.
Okay, okay.
It's, it's a, it's a plan for the whole town, which currently is over 4,000 acres. And it has all of the same types of issues that we're looking at infrastructure-wise, land use-wise, that we are in the small area plan for Chatham Park. It is a 15 to 20-year, 30-year out plan. So it's, you know, it's.
It's very conceptual.
So it's similar, exactly. So when you make decisions, like rezoning decisions, you look at the land use plan and you take into account everything that was done to have a comprehensive cohesive plan drafted. But as time goes on, there might be additional conditions or community needs have changed. So you're, you're not tied 100% to that plan.
It's empowering to the staff.
Yes, sir. So like the way that we put the design plan language together is staff would be looking at the small area plan for consistency, the same thing that we do for the town's land use plan. And if we deviate from that, there needs to be a reason for it. Same thing with the land use plan. And by state law, if you deviate from the town's land use plan, you actually have to update it.
Right.
That was with the 160D changes, so it's, it's a similar concept to that. And staff from a planner's point of view, having a large area that's planned out, you know, as Chatham Park is a planned unit development, it's just the largest ever in the state, that's a good thing. Because what towns typically get are piecemeal developments, one at a time, like 100 acres here, 50 acres here, 300 here, and you don't see that interconnectivity. You don't see how the, you can plan, you know, 30 years in advance for infrastructure for 5,000 acres. So from a town planner's perspective, it's amazing, you know, to have that tool.
You can put the roads where you want, you can put the sewer where you want.
The major cap.
Yeah, in advance, and then Chatham Park then can plan.
Yes.
Conceptually. What to do with the in-betweens?
Well, the, Chatham Park is tying themselves to the small area plan. So what they're putting in there is what they've agreed to do. With the understanding as we get more detailed, or updated, rather, section design plans, there could be some changes needed. But it's going to be more practical changes than anything else. It's not going to be, the town thinks we need like a, a water park or something. You know, it would be something that would be based on issues that come up.
But we do reserve the right to ask Chatham Park to build a water park there. But conceptually, I think a good example is street tipicals. So in the North Village, there's, I don't say a disagreement, but there's a bit of a, a thought that the street tipicals in the North Village are the options for Chatham Park that they get to choose from. So the street tipicals in the South Village, we said, are conceptual. So there are examples of what street tipicals they could use, but staff can recommend a deviation from that. A good example is Vine Parkway. They ran that median down the middle of it, and that has caused some concern from public safety response, because they have to.
U-turns.
Round, right. And so that, or 20 years from now, there may be a road typical that no one's considered yet that we want to implement. So it gives the staff some flexibility to say, no, we'd rather have the 10-foot path here, not a median here, or, you know, an additional turn lane, or all different kinds of options that we just don't know if we need.
So let's talk about something more specific that somebody mentioned in the public opinion section. About slopes and how parks shouldn't be built on steep slopes. Can, can you address that and how conceptual plans can can mitigate issues like problems with that? And like, for instance, let's, let's say Chatham Park, I'm going to give you this land. You find out it's all steep gullies and it's not parkland at all.
We have a slopes map already in the existing conditions.
It's all in an agreement?
Well, yes, and it, it shows where the steep slopes are. And our third-party consultant that looked at the proposed park locations, over months and months of town staff going over the options with Chatham Park and with the consultant, meets, it should meet the slope standards. If there's some parts of the park that have like a 15% slope or something like that, and we can make it work, sure. But again, with the, the benefit of the small area plan being conceptual is in the future, if the, if the town says, well, we need a park that includes.
Water park.
A water park, yeah. Then we need, you know, a, a certain slope for that. And if it doesn't have it, then we can look at other areas. We're not 100% tied to it. But no, it wouldn't be a water park, it would be something like ball fields or something like that.
And in this version, they have agreed to meet the U D O standard for slope. So like the original master plan or elements, 20% slope, and the U D O is 15. So they have agreed in the South Village to, to meet the U D O requirements.
Which is an example of how if there is no agreement, do you go back, revert back to the U D O? Is that also what you said earlier?
So they, they have a 20% slope map, but I'm pretty sure in 2015, they didn't even have a slopes requirement. So with the South Village, Southern, or South Village, we are looking at 15%. But yeah, going back to it being conceptual, the town can in the future require the location of a park be changed. It would need to be based on, you know, actual issues that are, that come up at that time. When we get, let's say, more detailed plans or surveys. So there's some wiggle room there. There, there was a lot of planning done in what Chatham Park has proposed. And again, with it going to that 5,000 acre viewpoint of all of the parks, not just the major parks, proposed parks, you can see how all the different parts of the South Village connect. And it, overall, that's what creates a more vibrant cohesive community versus if, if it were piecemealed, which Chatham Park could do that too with the small area plans and not have gone through, let's say that, the next slide, actually, you can go to, and I'll make that point. So it's required to have models done. And since we're doing this at the 5,000 acre size, we were able to model all of it and plan for the entire area. So for transportation modeling, Chatham Park is proposing all the major roads, and it's R K K that's reviewing it. They've submitted their, a few questions, and they're, that's still being worked on. But we will know that for the entire 5,000 acres, the major roads that are shown, illustrated in the, in the small area plan will adequately be able to handle that capacity, that future trips per day capacity. Same thing with water and sewer. Try River has hired a consultant that's reviewing that model. And then our financial impact analysis, we're reviewing that in-house. So there's a benefit for being able to do that for 5,000 acres versus if we did smaller plans 16 times, yeah, we would get the models for each one of those, but not necessarily the benefit of seeing how it would all connect and having that agree upon in the beginning.
Teresa, I keep hearing this notion that if we ask for small area plans as they were originally conceived in the master plan, being iterative and multiple, that we're going to somehow lose a scale of planning that the town and the developers desire. And I just want to, I want to squash this completely because I think it's, it's a misunderstanding and I don't think it's accurate. Chuck Smith, Robin, you guys are accomplished planners. You know what you're doing. There is a difference between the private planning you do in-house and the small area plan process, which is public planning. There's a big difference here, friends. I've heard you say, Chuck, well, well, we have to do it this way. I know you're already doing it this way. And it's, it's misleading to suggest that in the process of small area planning, that you can't carry over this scale, this comprehension of the whole 5,000 acres plus. Route 1 and 15501 and the town north of Highway 64. It's misleading, friends. We know for a fact that you do this planning already because you've planned the Chatham Parkway South. You've planned this very significant sewer project. We know you're doing this planning at large scale. So to suggest that, that the town asking you to deliver the small area plans as they were originally conceived iteratively, time, it's not, it's misleading. And it's not fair. Because we are going to lose a tremendous amount of improvement that none of us in the room right now can predict. What happens 30 years from now, 40 years from now? The challenges that this board would face decades into the future? None of us can predict any of those challenges. So we need to preserve, this board needs to preserve the rights of people in these seats 15, 20, 25, 40 years from now, to address the challenges that we can't begin to comprehend. We need to preserve the prerogative and leverage and power of this governing board by denying the idea of a 5,000 acre small area plan. We need these smaller, small area plans, whatever they are. I'm open to that negotiation. I understand the Chatham Park investors have a very significant deal afoot for a 1,200 acre golf course, golf course community. I think that would be a starting point. I think that would be a starting point. They bring that, let's pass a 1,200-acre small area plan, and then let's proceed with the rest of the project. Let's, let's look at it in an incre- incremental and iterative way. So that we go stepwise and we don't give up future boards' ability to ask for difficult things.
For many of the decisions that we have had during my almost four years of sitting here, I have felt like the decision was made before I ever got here. That's very frustrating. And I do feel like we need to preserve the decision-making authority of the people that we put in these seats, not just give it away and pay over it, which is what I feel like this is doing. Personally, I'd like to see this broken up into three iterations with six to 12 months in between. I think that would be plenty fair. Gives future board members a chance to get in, to have some input. I think that's reasonable.
We, we do have a review, it's in the, uh, I'm not, the provision in the first page or two of the additional elements, a required annual review between staff and board and Chatham Park with any discrepancies that from the past or the, hopefully, future. It's in the master plan.
That's exactly right, Commissioner. Those annual meetings are happening. Have you ever been invited to one? I've never been invited to one. Governing Board concerns.
Some of these issues that have came to us are, are staff-related and staff has took care of them.
I understa-
And reported to us.
I understand. And staff, staff have done a fantastic job so far. I'd say the one really big miss, uh, that we all missed was the division of the North Woods neighborhood and the country route Brown Road. And that happened after the 2021 passage of the first small area plan. And that was in 2023 where it really finally hit the fan. Um, I'm not saying that we can predict those kinds of things and, and prevent those kinds of things happening again, but I think it's a great example of something that none of us could have imagined in 2021. And when I'm 90, I don't want people cursing me saying I, I gave away the store in, in 2025. So, um, staff play a very specific role and the governing board plays a specific role. Staff do what they're told based on the law and the ordinances and the agreements that are, that are codified and, and voted on by this board. But that needs to change over time because there's always things that are going to be, uh, unpredictable. And stormwater, we're, we're going to have worse, worse headaches with that in the future. We know that storms are becoming more severe and, and more intense.
But to that fact, we had county roads, it's not a house on washed out. So, you know, it's not all about development, washing out roads in stormwater.
That's right.
Numerous Chatham County roads that were washed completely out and didn't have house on. No development, you know?
And I think, you know, we do have examples of changes to things over time as a result of those reviews, like the North Village Small Area Plan and the Oral Housing Additional Element.
Yes.
Some of the additional element.
Mm-hmm.
Well, that we modify them. Which one? But, um, so I think, you know, that process is in place for iterative changes similar to what we do to the UDO um, and continue to update and keep it relevant. And I think that that also applies to what was imagined 10 years ago as, or, or longer ago as the process for approving this and what a small area plan was. And, um, I think the concept now of, of section plans and coming back. And I think, you know, what, what you said is, is accurate. I've heard a different side of it and that Chatham Park is doing their planning, they're working with developers. They're, they're making plans that we don't often hear about until later. So I think this is a method that Teresa and other staff have come up with to work more closely with Chatham Park and learn more about those plans at a different stage in development, when it is providing better information to the town about more specific development. Um, and I think that may be what the small area plans were originally imagined to do, but I think that the way that the requirements are, uh, there's a large, what I would call like level of detail scope required, um, for the small area plans. And so it's not just the roads to have some, because part of this board is have some confidence that those, the roads that Chatham Park is imagining are not going to go through a neighborhood again. And that's what, um, you know, some people are looking for, that surety of where that road is, is going to go.
Mm-hmm.
Where fire stations are going to go, that we don't get boxed out of, of the good land. Um, parks, same thing, like you mentioned, the slopes on the parks and things like that. This, this gives that level of planning and also more detail later. And, and I think that it's, it's important to, you know, look at the decisions that were made in the past and also look at the reality of what we know today and what we experienced with the North Village Small Area Plan and modifying it, um, with UNC property shifting and, and things like that. We, we have that experience and that process of those changes overall. Um, and I, to me, this is some, it's, it's not directly applicable because this small area plan process developed for this PDD is unique anywhere, of course. But, uh, when we were working on the UDO and it was really difficult to get that through the initial time, we, we broke it up and worked on the critical pieces and then came back to the other pieces. And to me, that's a analogous to what, uh, staff is working with these section plans now.
Um, I appreciate your attempt at an analogy, but I think it falls apart, mayorship, uh, especially because the UDO is still largely incomplete, in my opinion, with no, no section on trees, tree cover, specimen tree protection. Uh, we deleted the conservation overlay and I deeply regret that we've not come back to that also. So, um, yeah, um, but, uh, I, I think I will speak to this, this idea of maybe this is jumping ahead a little bit, but, um, the section design plan, um.
Go to those slides, it's like, I mean, what's next?
Any further questions about the concept, notion?
Well, let's go, the next slide is about the conceptual and about the.
Okay, so, um, yeah, if, if the board was open for this to be a conceptual plan, um, we would recommend there be language that says that the small area plan is a guide for how development could occur. Um, it's not considered final or the only way it may occur presents concepts and guidance that may vary as actual development unfolds. And that before Plural Plate or Site Plans are approved, uh, the Chatham Park shall submit the section design plan, um, for staff to review. Uh, you can go to the next slide. We'd also look at having, um, updates, Chatham Park providing updates to the town board. Well, actually, it would be the planning department working with Chatham Park. And then look aheads of the next year. Um, the, so staff's concern with, uh, development as it occurs in the future, um, beyond like the general layout, which I think the, this 5,000-acre small area plan gives you a general layout of, uh, the roads and the different uses and, um, parks and things like that. So if, if the board is amenable to that, staff's more concerned with the standards. And I think that's been mentioned a couple of times from the board as well. So, uh, we want to make sure that there's language that the elements will be updated as needed. Um, and that we will make sure that all of the town's standards, uh, engineering specs as well are updated to, for Chatham Park to have to, um, meet in the future, however that changes and is updated. So whatever's in place now, uh, might not address all the issues 10 years from now. So we'll make sure that the elements and the standards are updated to meet that. Um, so that would be an additional, uh, recommendation. And next slide. Uh, so this is just items that would be provided in the look ahead. Next one. And the annual updates. I don't think everyone's as interested in that. Um, so in the actual.
So though, I do, let, let's go through some of those items because I do think they, think what you're adding to be, you're suggesting to be adding to be specific about these annual updates is something that's come up about, you know, sometimes the updates have been a, a video update, but this gets a lot more prescriptive about economic impact and, and other things that are included in it. So I do think.
Like, so staff's, staff's recommendations on the look aheads and the updates, we, we feel like there needs to be, um, better coordination with Chatham Park in the South Village. That, uh, and it's not for any reason that was, I think, intentional. It's just when there's so much development going on, um, it's hard to keep up with what, what's being proposed and talking about it in advance. So if we make it a requirement to do so, um, that's just going to help ensure that when we get to the Plural Plate and Site Plan step, that all of these major issues have already been addressed. We keep up with that.
Is this a staffing issue then? Are you saying we, we can't get to it because we're busy or what, what exactly do you mean?
It's part of it, yes. I mean, it's.
Okay. So.
A, a small town with as much development permits going on as a, a city, like medium-sized, large city, to be honest. So, yeah.
Okay.
That is an issue, um.
So one, I'd take the opportunity to address that.
I was to Cali too.
Last year, and correct me if I'm wrong, but 50% of the permits in Chatham County were in Pittsburgh. And our staff is about half the size of the county planning department.
It's less than half.
We're, we're doing the same amount of work with less than half of the people. And, uh, and, and to the planning department, engineering, like, we had gotten almost all reviews down to 30 days for initial review. So we were doing great work, but it is a lot.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Take an opportunity there as a pitch.
Yeah.
As there's additional tax revenues in the upcoming years, obviously the additional staff will be hired. But, um, we still want to make sure that it's required that before plans are submitted to the town, that we have been working with them on it. Because by the time you get to the Plural Plate or Site Plan stage, things are kind of more, uh, you know, ironed out.
In place.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of money has been spent and time has been spent on engineering. Um, and it's, it's a lot harder to change things at that point. So we've noticed that some in the North Village. We just want to mitigate that in the South Village and we thought this would be a good opportunity to, um, require some additional steps.
Okay.
Approval of the small area plan. So, um, and again, I'm not, I'm not trying to recommend approving it. I'm giving you pros and cons for approving it, um, as a 5,000 acre small area plan. So staff does see a lot of benefits in it.
So what are the, can you give me a benefit analysis of breaking it up into like three pieces? What, what are the positives for that? And what are the negatives? In your opinion, I know it's just.
How about, how about we stick with the four, four and a half or five that you have conceived with your requirement that section development plans be lumped no more than four at a time? Uh, what are the benefits to that?
Commissioner Bonnus, let's let Commissioner Foley ask his question.
Okay.
And you can follow up maybe. My, my original question was, and the, the benefit, the, the pluses and minus of, 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 from the town's perspective, from the town's staff perspective of, of confirming the whole thing at once or breaking it up into three or four parts?
This is just my opinion professionally, but, um, I would say that when you break it down to three or four plans versus one, um, the, a negative to that is no one, Chatham Park is not being tied to a larger plan at that point. So we'll, we'll get a section, a smaller plan for this one section. We don't know exactly what they're going to propose in the future. So that kind of takes away a little bit of the being, you know, not being able to have that, um, surety of, you know, this is, this is what we should expect to see. Uh, so it's easier to plan when you, when you can do that. Um, something else, I, just based on seeing plans over the years and they do change somewhat, but, you know, unless there's like a huge shift in the economy or market, I, I don't foresee huge changes, um, in the future based on what we're looking at right now with this 5,000-acre small area plan. Uh, also for the developer, they, they're looking to find, uh, companies and businesses that want to develop in Chatham Park. I feel like that would be more difficult to do without them knowing that this, this layout has already been approved, at least conceptually by the town. Um, they don't have that surety. And this board is making a decision, a legislative decision, um, looking at the small area plan. And, uh, you, you know what your, your needs are, um, and the, the issues that are with the town. But with it being a legislative decision for the future small area plans, that's also very difficult for a developer to do because they're, they're wanting to plan out the infrastructure and everything else in advance. So when you have that unsurety about it being legislative, um, a future board might have concerns that might be completely something that this board would never even think would be a concern. If that makes sense.
Okay.
So, you know, it's, it's just setting the path down to getting an idea of the overall layout and then working with staff to iron out the issues like stormwater and such, if they do need a change in the future. Having a method to be able to do that. Um, and then the coordination with, with staff in advance so that we're not just, you know, arguing at the 11th hour what a street typical should be. So again, pros and cons.
Yeah, and we'll have a good idea where all the parks are going to go. We now know where all of our fire stations will go in the South Village. Those are two big ones that we had to, I felt like were big problems when I, when y'all hired me. We had no idea where fire stations were going. Now we know where all four of them are going to go.
And you'll see in the, one of the slides coming up, um, on what the requirements are in the section design plans. The one that is still discretionary by the board is public facilities. So the parks and greenways and, um, things like that, schools, you still have, you would still have that conversation with them and, uh, be able to say this is where we needed to go. Everything else would be worked out more at the administrative level. So, you know, pros and cons to that as well.
So please correct me if I'm wrong, but I've not read anything in the master plan or in the small area plan approval process, uh, or in the prior small village, uh, North Village Small Area Plan that prohibits a small area plan from considering matters beyond its boundary. In fact, the small area plan village for, for the North Village does contemplate things outside of the North Village. There are some overlaps into the map down into the South Village. Some of those things have changed. But I don't think there's any reason why a small area plan for a 1,200-acre section of the South Village, why can't it have a map that? why can't it have a map that references the entire 5,000 acres while focusing on the 1,200 acres? Why, for, for the purposes of transportation, can it not, and should it not contemplate the areas beyond 1,200 acres? That's the beauty of, of, as you said, this, this developer and their ability to plan large.
So it's, it's not required. And if you're not actually approving those other areas, it's just a pretty drawing. It doesn't mean anything.
That's right, but it, it informs the process. What you said earlier, we, we would. The teeth would be to that section of 1,200 acres. And the, the reference to larger transportation planning outside of that 1,200 acres would be informative. Not, it would be conceptual. It wouldn't be vested. It wouldn't be required.
It's a little, I mean, I see what you're saying and I see the, I see how there's benefits to that as well. So just, just for clarity though, what the difference in conceptual and what you're saying versus what would be approved with this 5,000 acre small area plan is Chatham Park is tied to this design and it's, staff is reviewing it for consistency. So we are looking at the overall layout, you know, 10, 15 years from now, which it can be updated. But if we're going to change it, there has to be a reason for it. So versus what you're saying conceptual, those other areas outside that one small area plan that's being reviewed, nobody's tied to any of that. The town nor Chatham Park. So again, you know.
Except that they have, they have investors and, and they are indeed tying their plans to how many sewer pump stations they're going to have outside of that 1,200 acres. A lot of certainty there that, you know, that is, is, is very much certainty from a business standpoint. But again, there's a difference between public planning and private planning. And I, I really appreciate Teresa Thompson, how hard you have worked on this effort and Jonathan Franklin and other staffers in order to, in my opinion, I, I'm characterizing it as kind of pulling the teeth out of the small area plan as it's been drafted and delivered to you. But all of this effort evades the spirit of this document, which is iterative and careful reflective planning over time with 16 sections in the South Village. And that's as many opportunities as 16 times for future governing boards to say to Chatham Park investors, that's a really lovely plan. Those are great ideas, but you really haven't addressed this really pressing problem that the people 15 years ago, back in 2025, never imagined that problem. It's really vital that staff understand the role of the governing board and that by proposing or even supporting the idea of a 5,000 acre small area plan, it's, it's semantically incorrect, friends. It's not small. So it's, you're, 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 you're suggesting that this governing board should give up the power of people 40 years from now. And I understand how challenging your, your task has been, but it's, it's not a good situation that we're in.
Level of detail that you need at this point. Because if it's the level that you would expect to have it for a 5,000 acre small area plan, then that's what you have. And that's what the next steps are for staff to, to work out those details in the future. But yeah, in terms of small, it's, it, I think that's left up for different interpretations as well. When I worked in Moore County, we, we did a small area plan for Seven Lakes and West End and it was 69,000 acres. But it was also just about, you know, 10% of the county. So in that terms, it was small. But again, it wasn't the level, it was similar to what we're seeing today. You know, and I think that's what Commissioner Bonnet is possibly, I, I think that's what you're saying is we're not seeing that level of detail that I think was what the intent was at that time. You know, like we want to see the minor roads maybe, right? At that time, we don't have that right now. We just have the major roads. That's the question is what's the, you know.
We don't even have a financial analysis.
We do.
This board does not. The version that has been published, it's on the website, does not have a financial analysis.
We'll make sure that's added.
Yeah. And I've asked for the digital version to send to us an hard copy and I haven't gotten that. I very much appreciate having the most up to date version that you're considering right now.
We just received one today. I have not had a chance to look at it, but we'll make sure that gets out to you.
So, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, and I have a South Village fiscal impact from '24.
An actual impact.
Send you all right now. I've had it for a while. Just forgot I had it.
That would help us. Thank you. But do you have a revised one you can send tomorrow? Tonight? You received one.
Yes, sir. Well, the, so the original draft we put on the website, we haven't put every submittal on the website because we've been reviewing it. We wanted it to be, work out all the details so that the board wasn't reviewing, you know, every submittal over again. We haven't had a chance to review the one that was submitted today.
So now you know we requested at your earliest convenience.
Sure.
Yeah, we'll get it to you as soon as we get the planning board packet put together.
Ms. Thompson, I have a question, please. Over here where you were talking about conceptual, small area plan, it does specifically state that is not intended to be considered final or the only way development may occur, but present concepts and guidance. Now, does that mean that basically future boards may be able to change what, what we, what may be approved? So since it's just a concept, is that, I just need that clarified. Is it saying that future boards can make decisions in reference to this?
It's, yes, and it's more, we're changing it though from legislative to administrative for the majority of it though. So that's the big difference is right now the entire plan is legislative, right? So the, but if you approve this small area plan, the future smaller, or the future section design plans will have more detail and staff will be looking at it more for the logistical standpoints, you know, and making sure those issues have been addressed. Because we've already looked at the overall design for the 5,000 acres. And then when we bring it, the section design plan to the town board, staff will have a recommendation to either, you know, for the public facilities, we, we think it needs to stay as it is shown in this small area plan, or we think it needs to change. And the board can agree or disagree or.
But that is an opportunity for the board in the future to look at it, is it not?
Correct, yes.
Yes.
It's just not going to be, if it's approved the way that is being presented, then it wouldn't be a completely discretionary decision.
Right.
And again, there's pros and cons to that for.
I just want to clarify.
The applicant, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to clarify that also, that it would come to you all, to the planning board, I'm sorry, planning department with their specifics. And then come back to the board. And if the board does not agree with it, it can be, they can vote it down.
Is that what you're saying or are you saying that this puts these decisions in the hands of staff to make?
So yes, if Chatham Park comes with a section design plan in the future and we compare it to the small area plan and we consider it consistent. Staff also says that there's an issue with a park location or something like that. We work out those details. The town board has complete discretion on that.
But the town board may not see many of these questions or decisions real time because they would probably be made in staff offices.
Well, the, in a couple of slides, it goes over what the requirements are. So before a section design plan's even submitted, we would get like a very, like a sketch type level drawing and go over that with the staff three to six months in advance. So we're working out the details. We're looking at the small area plan for consistency. We're also looking at the elements and the specs and, you know, what's the, what's, what should the cross sections be?
If it's congruent, it will get passed at the staff level.
We would give a recommendation for approval to the town board.
So I would recommend, so there's four more slides in your presentation that go to more specifics about your recommendations. So I'd recommend that we go through those, hold our questions and then, and then continue on. Cause we're getting into a lot of the topics that are covered in the upcoming slides.
So for the look aheads, we were thinking what the anticipated upcoming submittals are for the year. What's basically what's Chatham Park expecting? Economic development opportunities, roadways, Chatham Park climate action plan updates, proposed public facilities. So, you know, as, as development occurs, we'll have a better idea of if additional schools are going to be needed, which I'm sure they will be, and where those would be located. Again, those are the kind of conversations staff would be having with Chatham Park in advance. And any adjacent parcel rezonings. And the annual updates, what's been happening in Chatham Park. So that includes how much has been built. Chatham Park's vested for up to 22,000 dwelling units and 22 million square feet of non-residential development. So where are we with that? Orbital housing, element updates. Just speaking from the staff's perspective, that, again, that's more of a concern from making sure that we're having high quality developments in the future is updating elements as needed. Tree preservation tracking, park updates, greenways, transportation model updates, water sewer model updates and sewer capacity management. And these were the requirements for the section design plans. We'd like to see their proposed tracking sheets for that design plan.
Exclusions.
Versus it being more piecemeal when we get them like for each Plurian Platte. We would also go through and reference what the requirements are, like where they come from. So what ordinance or specification or element? Cause it can get confusing with Chatham Parks, all the different, different types of documents that have been approved. We want the agreement that would be approved, if it's approved, for the section layout plan to, that the intent is to foster early coordination with town staff on infrastructure and development components. It's provide greater clarity where the small area plan remains conceptual and also streamline Plurian Platte and site plan reviews. So again, the way it is right now, we, we're, we're not given any information about what is being developed until Chatham Park is ready to submit the Plurian Platte or site plan. So at that point, let's say if a town engineer thinks it needs to be a different street cross section, it's, it's a lot more difficult to get that changed after all that design work has already been done at that level. So this way we can have that conversation early on. Speaking of Chatham Park, they've requested that we increase it to six sections or six center design plans can be submitted for each section.
Yeah, I think that's a typo.
It was four.
Chatham Park may submit up to six at a time.
For each.
As part of each section design plan.
That's new since Friday.
Yeah, that it was six sections, it's minimum or maximum, sorry. Chatham Park shall not submit more than six section design plans per section.
That's what, yeah, because it says the South Village, I can word it better, but the South Village is divided into 16 sections. And Chatham Park may submit up to six sections for each of those 16. That's the way it's, but I can fix the wording.
The idea there is, the idea there is if you, you've got 16 sections, right? But we don't want, the whole, the whole point of this is for us to get kind of a 20,000 foot view of what that area is going to look like. So if they have unlimited section design plans, they could submit 100. Every time they have a site, they could submit one. And that gets away from the whole point of this. So we had started with four. Robbie and Chuck were explaining some, I think some good examples of how four may be too few because we looked at the sections and what the different acreages is. And with six, I think that gets it down to like 20 or 40 acre kind of snapshots of what they plan to do for that section, for that section of that section. So the idea is again, not to see the commercial sections be turned in piecemeal one side at a time, but to give us kind of a broader scope of what's coming. Now, some of that is going to be cartoon and is going to kind of just be what it could be. But still that gives staff and the board a look at what that area of town may look like in the future.
But there's only 16 sections altogether. So that could mean that there are as few as three section design plan processes for the remainder of the 5,000 acres.
Well, I think there's language in here too that prevents, it says they can submit up to four sections in one section design plan. So technically the minimum would be four, the maximum would be, was that 96?
Six. Yes.
From a staff's perspective, that's not a bad thing, by the way. If they had that level of detail ready to get approved, then I don't think that's realistic, but.
So I'm going to interrupt you again, and I'm going to say I appreciate that it's easier for you to plan with that broader perspective. And do you understand my perspective that this is a thwarting of the governing board's power? I mean, either we have one opportunity to vote on 5,000 acres or we have as few as three opportunities to vote on section design plans over the next 40 years. Or we go back to what was conceived in the master plan, which was 16 small areas and 16 opportunities for governing boards in the future to have public input processes, to have deliberation, to have the opportunity to say to Tim Smith and Bubba Rall and Chuck and the gang, it's a beautiful plan and it really doesn't meet the needs of what our voters are clamoring for. Whatever that future problem is that none of us can, can imagine today.
I wasn't disagreeing with you. I was simply responding to the statement that if they submitted four plans and they were at the level of detail that the board needed to make an approval, that's not necessarily a bad thing because they would know this is how it's going to be developed. We looked at everything. And when we go to approve a Plurian Platte or site plan, we have that document to go, to go on. As I was saying, that's not really realistic because no developer is going to know specifically what they're going to develop for, you know, thousands of acres. So I wasn't disagreeing with you. I was just speaking to that statement.
Commissioner Bonnet, just one thing. I understand what you're talking about for the future boards. Pam and myself, Mr. Piocco and all, that was one of the first statements that we put in the master plan. My question is, what if we went back and rephrase this look ahead, annual look ahead, put more specific ordinances in or duties and then had it, anything that came had to come to the board. It's staff level, but it still should be approved by the board or either reviewed at least by the board.
That's what.
I appreciate that idea and I think that's what's already happened. But it's, the conversations start at staff level rather than the board driving those conversations. And so it really is a separation between the power of the people, the people who elect us and staff who are. and staff who are just working within the guidelines of the 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 lines on the playing field and the rules of the game, which are dictated by all these documents. Whereas if we if we stick with this idea that there's sixteen small area plans and maybe we'll let them combine four at a time in future, that's that many more opportunities for the public, citizens, for people who aren't even the public, but we know them and love them because they live in Moncur and they shop, they 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 frequent stores and businesses in town. And we respect their concerns and opinions. And they can come to us twenty years or people who are sitting in these seats twenty years from now with a concern that was never imagined in all these documents. And if we have made these decisions today, I fear that we're undermining the ability of people in the future citizen uh servants of the citizens to address that.
I kind of disagree a little bit with you. If if we have an annual review and look ahead with staff and board and if if Mr. Messick has to put it in more legal terms, that this is what is going to happen, that should cover future boards. Um, I'm just throwing that out, I'm just up for suggestions.
I like I like it, I like that idea. Um, that gives power to uh the argument. The argument is the commissioners, what about commissioners in the future? And you both understand that very well. Um, but I I see that so far there haven't been many hiccups.
We with Chatham, we have a very, I'd say fortunate staff that are professionals and and give us the information that we can use to make a decision for our citizens. So that's who I feel about that and I thank you for all your work.
Thank you. Um, so the last three bullets, if it were to be approved, uh staff is saying that the plan will be that the smaller plan would be reviewed for consistency. Um, and modifications to the smaller plan may be required to comply with updated town standards, regulations, or respond to change circumstances, emerging community needs, or evolving conditions. And an example of a modification from the conceptual smaller plan would be uh street cross sections, which we've used a few times, and proposed location and design of public facilities. Following town staff and planning board review and recommendation, each section design plan will be forwarded to the town board for final consideration. And this can change, obviously. I mean, this is just a staff recommendation at this time. Again, uh staff is concerned with elements being updated over the years as needed. Uh, what we've done in the past is as we're reviewing clearing plats and site plans, we have come up with a list of items that we want to address with Chatham Park, have a workshop with them and um.
Including the commissioners.
Sorry?
The workshop includes the commissioners.
The initially, the workshop would that we discuss would just be between staff and Chatham Park staff to address the concerns that we know of, come up with a solution together is ideally would be what we would do is come up with a solution together and then present it to the board. Something that staff and the Chatham Parks already agreed on for the board to consider.
Similar to the affordable housing element. But y'all were pretty, y'all stayed pretty in tune to what was going on with that.
Um, so in the general provisions element, it does say that Chatham Park shall meet with the Pittsburgh Board of Commissioners at least annually um to review additional elements and discuss possible revisions to improve additional elements or the way in which they are applied to the development in Chatham Park. So that's where uh.
Is there language in there that says we have the ability to change it, discuss possible revisions to improve? So does that allow us the power to? Would that supersede the uh the agreement between Chatham Park? Let's say that the board sees trees as as being an issue, for instance, or whatever, one whatever unseen issue is to come. Maybe we have stormwater retention ponds that need to be bigger for a hundred year events or five hundred year events. Would we have the ability with this phrasing to apply levers to Chatham Park?
Not in a way that is written out where
We are.
it's required that they have to.
This is more of an update as opposed to a legislative endeavor. Anything that happens at this level is completely voluntary. Completely voluntary. Um, whereas in future, a small area plan approval process many years from now could be withheld from that that approval could be withheld in order to ask for a much more serious consideration by the applicant of some dire concern, some urgent matter that the that the voters bring to us.
That is true.
Okay, thank you.
I think there's just one more slide. Um, updating the U D O and specs. So staff also wants it to be clear that whatever um specifications Chatham Park will be using, it will be whatever it is at that time, they submit that specific development. Um, there was a development agreement approved uh back in twenty twenty one that states that Chatham Park would just need to use the town standards in effect in twenty twenty one uh for forever. So we just want it to be clear that it will be what was originally approved in the master plan, which is that uh they have to abide by whatever the rules are in effect at that time. So ten years from now, whatever the rules are, they need to follow those.
Okay. That's important.
If it's not covered in their other entitlements, if there's a gap, then they have to use the.
Right.
You know, add. If this is a U D O uh asterisk.
And how it's standards, specifications, yes, sir.
And they've done pretty well adapting to some U D O changes that they weren't required to adapt to anyway, so.
Again, it's, you know, we went over pros and cons of everything, so. You can decide.
Can we go back to the one slide prior, please?
Okay.
So how do we make this uh concrete? How do we, it says shall meet, that's so shall meet means will meet, correct? And discuss possible revisions. Okay. So it's more of an informational session. Or we're powerless to change what's already been agreed, correct?
The way it's written, yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
You know, stormwater is kind of the issue at
A issue.
full's minds, right? Considering what we've been through the last couple of months. The the issue there is, you know, the state statutes are what we have to follow in terms of like a conditional zoning. Uh, now, if we can get tighter restrictions in a conditional zoning, that's okay. Um, but even there, that's been a little tough of a conversation to have with folks, too. They're kind of like, you know, this is the state regs, why would I? Or these are the Ch- uh the Jordan Lake rules. So that's a, that's a, that's a tough one.
I I did follow up, if I might, add to stormwater. I followed up with the county, called the county uh and and spoke with the supervisor regarding stormwater violations for Chatham Park. And there were a number of them. But substantially, there was only one fine. And that was right at the beginning, when this is what she shared. When Mosaic was being built, there was a bulldozer that was pushed over a stream. And that person who did that was a grave mistake on his part. But Chatham Park was uh uh fined ten thousand dollars, she said. But I asked her, what are they, you know, everybody gets cited citations. And Chatham Park has been very quick to mitigate those issues, she said. And she also said that she'd rather, when it comes to stormwater, she'd rather have us uh to deal with Chatham Park because they have deep pockets and they resolve issues very quickly than than go with smaller, smaller developments whose bottom line is a little, their their margin is a lot tighter. And she said, uh, that's it, I don't know, I wanted to share that for stormwater.
Let's say to you, and I think all this relies on partnerships or requires a agreement between the two parties like conditional zoning does, you know, for a change to an additional element requires agreement between two parties. Um, and obviously, there are a lot of different feelings about Chatham Park or different developers, but conditional zoning requires that as well. And I think in Pittsburgh, we've been very successful in using conditional zoning to get exceptional uh development in this area. But that also relies on the legislature and the power that they give us. And my concern is how much power this table will have in the future. And I think agreements that we make now will likely hold up and I think we're seeing the ability to make decisions in the future being limited. I don't know how long it's going to last. I want to comment really more about those politics, but like, I I'm, you know, conditional zoning is a good tool for us. Um, conditional zoning can be a good tool that we're not allowed to do anymore. Um, and so there's a lot of those things that are being controlled by the interests of the legislature. And so decisions and, you know, over and above agreements that we can make now are things that we can be sure will happen in the future is is uncertain about what a board will be allowed to do or or require.
Very good statement, very good.
You know, tree protection is is one of those. Uh, stormwater is one of those, that it continues to be limited, our ability to make those agreements.
Yeah, my. I recognize those concerns with regard to policymaking outside of the P D D. But within the P D D, it's a different matter. We have a relationship with the Chatham Park investors that is contractually bound by the development agreement. And if Tim Smith and Bubba Rawl and this board of governors agreed that every single house from here on out should be pink, doesn't matter what the state legislature says, all those houses can be pink. It's a contractual arrangement. So I I'm I'm less concerned about changes in legislation and more concerned about the fact that we are potentially giving up very significant power out of fear, perhaps, that the legislature is going to take it away. We're, we don't need to be giving up this this authority, this opportunity for people who we don't even know who's going to be sitting in these seats in the future.
But there is state regulations that have to go by also.
The agreement can allow exceedance of those state regulations.
There won't be less than the state.
I I think that's right.
That's correct.
I think that's right.
Mm hmm.
Yeah. But it is just a contractual.
Always be more, but it can't be less, yeah.
Yeah, it is a contractual agreement. And I think we're already exceeding the limits. And in fact, Chuck can probably elaborate or maybe staff about how um uh in particular, there's stormwater in some instances is is quite a bit more rigorous than the state law uh allows. Um, and and I appreciate that. Um, but the concerns are what happens in between in those places where it's uh not quite as rigorous and robust. But um anyway, we've we spent a lot of time on this. It's important. Yes, it is.
Staff um was hoping to get the feedback from from you all on if we're going in the right direction and if we don't have that right now, that's okay. Um.
Are we going to formalize that? Do you want to uh? How how do you want us to give you feedback? Tell me. What's the process? Uh, do you want to formalize a like, let's get feedback within the next two weeks via email? Or how how would you like it?
Well, you you've provided us feedback. Um, but it sounds like we're going to continue with what staff recommendation is as of now and present that to the planning board as is, you know, recommended. And if that changes at all, I guess that will happen when we come back to the board and have additional conversations, I'm assuming.
Can we talk big picture timing wise? What what's the approval process in your opinion? How will this? What's the, what's the the timing on dates?
We are going to, well, the goal is to present the small area plan to the planning board this month. Uh, they would not have much time to review it. So I would think they would need an additional month before they would be willing to make a recommendation. So I think the earliest would be October for planning board recommendation. Um, we can also uh come back to you next month and answer any questions you might have, continue the conversation. Um, you will have the small area plan, though, in advance as well, you know, same time planning board gets it. Um, present that in October. Then the earliest I would I would foresee a decision by the town board would be November.
It's the planning board having a work session planned.
Not that I'm aware of. It was talked about at the last meeting, but nothing formally has been requested.
I think that'd be a really good thing to set up. A work section for work session for the planning board. I think I heard two of them asked for it. Yeah. I think they're hungry to dive into details. Yeah, I'm sure they feel a great weight and responsibility. So working it out with under your guidance might be a a great thing to do.
You're tracing.
Thank you.
Uh, up next, we have a public hearing.
Water parks? Next public hearing is on water park.
Of course they not, no. Uh, so we have a public hearing on a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the local government commission. So I'll take a motion to go into public hearing.
Still move.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Baldwin, second question or votes? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Yeah, I has anybody signed up for the public?
Uh, no one has signed up for the public hearing, no.
Yeah, so this is just um authorizing us to submit our application with L G C for their meeting on October seventh to be approved for financing to purchase the Rafi building.
I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
Still move.
Commissioner votes, second?
Second.
Mayor Pro Tem Baldwin, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All right, up next, we have a resolution for installment loan financing for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six.
You need to adopt the.
Need a motion, don't we?
To adopt a resolution that goes with the public hearing.
It is her first item as Assistant Town Manager, so if you have any questions.
Yes. Grill is up.
Any uh, any questions? Uh, I'm not taking a motion to adopt the resolution to authorize the filing of an application with the local government commission for approval of financing agreement.
Certainly.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Baldwin. Second question or votes? All those in favor, say aye. Thank you. Uh, up next, we have a resolution for installment loan financing, twenty five, twenty six.
Yes, and this is the resolution. We need to adopt um for Truist Bank, who is the lender that we um selected for using to do the financing for the Rafi building. They require their own resolution that we adopt, authorize, essentially saying that the board is agreeing to go into. essentially saying that the board is agreeing to go into an agreement with Truist Bank for this. And then there will be an agreement that Jonathan will probably be the one to sign when we close on the financing.
Any questions on that?
Amount of the loan, the term of the loan, the interest rate on the loan are all in that resolution.
Yes.
Yep.
Move to approve the resolution approving financing terms from Truist Bank.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and now we have a budget amendment for the property purchase of 274 Pittsburgh Elementary School Road. Any questions on this related item?
No, but I'm so pleased to see this come about. And I would be honored to make the motion to approve the budget ordinance amending the fiscal year 2526 operating budget for the purchase of 274 Pittsburgh Elementary School.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner votes, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Up next, we have a discussion on the Welcome Center financial support. So.
Got my name on it.
Right.
All right, so we had a couple of BOC Board of Commissioner members request this discussion pertaining to the town providing financial support to the Welcome Center attached. You will, it's just an example of of a similar agreement that we have with the Boys and Girls Club. This type of agreement would be required for that same type of financial support provision to the Welcome Center. They provided you all a letter about the services being offered and the amount that they're requesting. We just put together what we could with the information we had for you all to have a discussion about how you want to proceed. There's not a staff recommendation, there's not a suggested motion. But if it is the board's fault to move forward with this, I would probably say you would just ask me to go negotiate the the terms of the agreement and then bring that back for for your consideration at the October meeting.
All right, thank you. I would I would like to invite Greg Lewis up if that's okay.
I just had one, how would this be dispersed in quarterly payments form?
Probably the exact same way we do Boys and Girls Club, quarterly.
Yeah.
And they would have to submit quarterly financials, quarterly updates on what they're doing. And then that would kind of, that would be the the check for then for that funding to be released for that quarter.
And is there a requirement? We should put a requirement in the language that a board member be part of the board.
Have to check on if
That's legal?
Have to check to see if that's legal.
Okay, all right.
If if the Welcome Center agreed to that, then it is. But I don't think we could force it.
Okay, I thought that was one of the stipulations, but.
That's in the Boys and Girls Club agreement? Okay.
No.
No.
No, it's not. Okay. What is the amount that's been discussed? Twenty thousand. Each audit, each year, the audit is seven. Seven thousand dollars. Required audit for a nonprofit, so it's about a thousand dollars a month total. Maybe Mr. Lewis can come up and address some questions. Perhaps you can start with the letter that you shared with the town.
Yes. It's, I don't have a copy of it with me, but it left it on my printer at home, so forgive me. But simple request, asking for the town to support the Welcome Center. We've been in operation since 2019. The town board unanimously voted to support the development and and opening of the Welcome Center in 2019. There was a proclamation given by the town, signed by Mayor Cindy at the time. And we went ahead and we opened the Welcome Center. The town of Pittsburgh gave us $10,000 in facade grant money at that time. And we've been operating on donations, sponsorships, fundraisers ever since. And there is precedent for a town supporting Welcome Center. It's currently happening in Siler City. Siler City supports, they just opened a Welcome Center, they're supporting it. And Sanford has a Welcome Center that is being, the town is supporting it to the tune of $25,000 and the county is supporting it to the tune of $25,000 as well. We're asking the town for $20,000 to help us, you know, do what we do, you know? The idea is that people come to town, our goal is to keep them in town longer. Our goal is to tell them what's going on in town, tell them the events in town, tell them the businesses in town, so they stay here, they spend more money in town. It's it's simple, you know, NEHA and the county draws them into town. Pittsburgh draws them into town. You know, we do market the events that are going on, but a lot of people walk into the Welcome Center. They walk into the Welcome Center because they drive through Pittsburgh. They see Pittsburgh as a small town as they go through. It's like, what's there to do here? There's nothing here. But then they see Welcome Center, so they stop, they ask questions. Our concierge Peggy, she gives them information, she tells them what's going on. We have a lot of information in there. We'd like to start sharing more information about the upcoming project of the road, the road widening of 15501 heading up. You know, we'd like to be the hub of information for that project. We support all the events that go on in Pittsburgh by being open where the planners of those events can meet every day. Yesterday, you know, we had the Welcome Center open so that they could use that as a place to meet. And all of the planners hang out there when they needed to. The bathrooms are used for the events, you know, I mean, it's right there, it's in downtown Pittsburgh. It's to me, it's obvious, you know, but I've been on the board for, since we've developed it. It's an obvious thing that the town needs it and the town should support it.
Centrally located, if you weren't there, what would happen to it?
I mean, I suppose a retail business would go in there. Okay, centrally located, it's it's, you know, what would that retail business be, you know? I don't know, but, you know, probably not a Starbucks.
Yeah. Starbucks, is that what you said?
No.
So what kind of economic benefits besides keeping people on town do you do you do you help with?
Well, I mean, you know, by people getting in town, there's there's tax benefits. You know, by the Welcome Center being open, the restrooms are there. It saves, to me, it saves money for the town. We're saving money for the town, having a concierge there giving out information. You know, you don't have an office in downtown, but there's nothing on Main Street for the town of Pittsburgh. I think we're saving the town money by having it open.
Do you think they share information about upcoming events and all?
Absolutely, absolutely. And we would love to share the space, the open space, an office space, whether it be for a commissioner, a town manager, or a planner, and talk about these things with the town residents. You know, we've offered that, we'd love for that, something like that to happen. Absolutely.
How are you funding now?
Currently, we fund through sponsorships. We have donors that support us. They support us with enough money to sponsor a week or a month of operation. And then we have fundraising events. We're getting ready to launch a online auction here in the next few days, where we have 55 items donated by local businesses to support the Welcome Center. Right, 55 items from local businesses, from overnight stays in in Pittsburgh, dinner in Pittsburgh, shops donating, you know, the plant, we have a basket for the plant. I mean, a lot of things coming from local businesses because they support what we do. They see, like Tiana said earlier, they see people coming into their shops because we sent them. We suggested things for them to do in downtown, you know? And at one point, like I said, there was a proclamation by this by this board supporting the Welcome Center, the development of it. We're just asking for a little financial support. Greg, do you guys get any financial support from the county?
Not yet.
I'm working on it. I'm here first. Okay. When we when we opened the Welcome Center, when we built the Welcome Center, we had a facade grant, two facade grants from the town, and we had some money from the county to help get the Welcome Center open, nothing since then.
I think your email also mentioned dedicated office, a kiosk to put out town information, some print support.
Yes, absolutely.
Did I miss anything?
I think so.
Bathrooms.
But I mean, you know, yeah, maps, we would love to have a map that we could pass out. So many people come in there asking for a map. You know, maps are expensive, they're expensive to develop, they're expensive to print. Ask the Chatham County Chamber of Commerce, you know, they're like gold and they're expensive to print, expensive to to develop. But, yeah, we'd love to have something like that. I think the town should create a map or pay somebody to.
So I remember originally when we talked about this, it was going to be, you know, of course, the Chatham County Welcome Center with support from Chatham County, including Siler City, I think, the Chamber and the Tourism Bureau. And, you know, I think over time, the Tourism Bureau has offices somewhere else. The Chamber went somewhere else, Siler opened their own, and Chatham County hasn't supported it. So like, what what are those? It's like, what are the indications you're getting, I guess, from those organizations?
The the Chamber of Commerce rented an office from us for a while. They were in in there. But there were too many people coming in there and interrupting their work, right? There were too many visitors coming in there to keep them from doing their work. We have a member, oh my gosh, her name just went off from the top of my head, that is on our board of Cheryl. Cheryl is on our board for the Welcome Center. She ran the Chatham County Chamber of Commerce for a while. So we have someone on our board from the Chamber of Commerce. They support the Welcome Center, right? It was just it was just too busy there for that at the time. And as far as the working with NEHA, NEHA has our office. NEHA has a website, brings people into town. And we, our concierge had a meeting with NEHA a couple of weeks ago, going through NEHA's website so that we would learn more about what NEHA does and how we can support her and help, you know, work together on those things. And as far as Siler City, we have a member of the Siler City Chamber of Commerce and the Siler City Merchants Association on our board as well. All we all work together to to make this work. But yes, it is a Pittsburgh and Chatham County Welcome Center. And like I said, it is my goal to go to the county after the town of Pittsburgh. But Siler City just opened their own Welcome Center. And it is 100% supported by the town of Siler City. And we're not asking for 100% support, we're not asking, you know, we're asking for help.
Do they bought the building?
Excuse me?
Do they bought the building?
Town, I think. And then they're 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 putting their staff member in because they just got they just got put on the Main Street list. I think that person is going to be their Main Street person, I think. So.
I heard the same thing.
Grad of Siler City in that big step.
I mean, Welcome Centers do a great job. You know, my wife and I, we like going into Welcome Centers when we go out of town, when we go to other countries, other states, wherever. We like going into Welcome Centers. A, we learn what they're doing and how they're doing it. We see different funding models for different Welcome Centers and how their staff. But we also learn what's going on in the area and, you know, some off the beaten path things, you know, that we can send people to or we get to go to.
Greg, I really appreciate your advocate advocacy for this. And I appreciate all the effort and volunteering that you've been doing on it. When Commissioner Foley brought this question to me a month or two ago, my response was, I feel like we've just got too much on our plate right now. And we, in our consent agenda, passed a $50,000 expenditure for planning staff. We heard from planning staff earlier tonight just how overwhelmed they are and how much more work they're doing with many fewer people than the county planning department. I spoke with a candidate for this fall's election for this board. And that person indicated in the spring that they thought they were going to be running on fiscal conservatism. And after they heard how seriously we grappled with our budget this year and how many things we had to cut, they changed their mind. We're we're minding the pennies, we're minding the dollars, and it's really tough. And I personally can't support it this year. What I did say is that if the county stepped up, then is when I will think more seriously about this. But I'm sorry that just for at this moment in time, I'm just one vote, but.
And I can and I can appreciate your your concern and your thoughts. And that's your job is, you know, to spend the taxpayer dollars wisely. Investing in something that keeps people in downtown as a small business owner is is a wise investment.
Yes.
You know, because it creates more tax dollars for you. So, you know, and there's there's I think you probably said enough. I don't know if there's any further questions.
What are the hours of the Welcome?
Apparently, we have a concierge there that is that is there 20 hours a week, except on weeks that there's First Sunday, it's 25 hours a week. But we rent two offices to Century 21, and they have people in there as well. That expands our hours, so we're probably open 40, 50 hours a week. Their their hours aren't set, our hours are set.
So the realtors are also like answering questions?
Absolutely, yes. It's, I mean, they because they see the benefit in it to them because there's people coming into town looking where to go, where to move. Hey, I'm considering moving to Pittsburgh, considering, you know, whatever. There's a lot of benefits to them because they see all of the people that come into the Welcome Center.
Like percentage wise, how much of the operational expenses are covered by that, like sublease?
25%? Maybe 30. I'm also the treasurer.
You should know, 27.
Well, you know, I haven't done the percentages, yeah.
I mean, I think overall with, as we saw in the example, like this is, there's a lot of good things that happen in the town and the town has to pay for things that the town would do or would benefit the town. And so I think if if Jonathan works to develop what that like contract would look like of what services would be provided and when they'd be provided and stuff, then I think that gives this board a lot better look at what what we're talking about. I mean, I think conceptually, it's, you know, it could be good. But I think that the specifics of what the town would be getting out of this contract would be what we need to see really. And then I'm I'm curious as well, like, I think I think there's been four facade grants over time and and other support. So if we could get some like, look at what what that has been over time. Because I I also believe that the the county should be investing in this.
It's too easy.
County, they get more tax revenue of every dollar.
More. Significantly. We agree with you.
Get tourism tax. So, you know, I think even even at any amount, it would be significant for the county to buy into this concept of a Welcome Center as well. So.
Yeah, I mean, with a little bit of funding from the town, more from the county, I mean, we expand our services, you know? And that's that's the goal, that's what we need to do. The hours that we're open are successful, people appreciate what we do. The businesses on Hillsborough Street, on Main Street appreciate what we do. The visitors coming into town appreciate what we do and us being there. So it it can only get better. Thank you. Thank you. I'll just ask this, Heather, how was our budget looking? How was our?
I mean, we've allocated already 1.3.
Oh, yeah, I thought it was 1.2.
I think it's 1.3 out of our fund balance this fiscal year.
I don't think they're asking that much.
No, but that's additional. It's an additional out of our fund balance. So it's, I mean, unless we're going to take it out of a current department budget, so.
Which I don't.
Thank you. From our fund balance.
Forty immediately looks up like, don't you?
Well, my real.
Was recommending the police. But also, we are
That's another 10 grand.
In our current budget, we we are budgeting $240,000 to support downtown in our downtown budget. So that is money that the town is doing that we used to give to Main Street Inc., who did the downtown for. And so this is money that the now, the town staff uses to support events, to promote events, to promote downtown.
Yeah.
It's a good point. Oh, sorry. I think we, we have the downtown advisory board as well. So I think it'd be good to have some type of agreement and then get the downtown advisory board to advise.
Idea.
Give input.
Yeah, because I'd love to get the downtown board's opinion on what the agreement might look like. I mean, it's a lot of the things that you suggested, we are already doing in-house. But the thing that we don't have are readily available bathrooms in downtown, which I think is.
That's a pay for itself.
Useful thing, but the hours concern me a little bit. Siler City is open, what, eight to five every day, I think.
Nine to five.
Nine to five every day. Sanford's open.
Five days a week or?
Five days, they're not open on the weekends because it's a staff member that is essentially.
How much are they spending on that?
Yep.
Yeah, right, right.
Do you know how much they're spending?
How much they're spending?
Siler.
Well, I'm not, I don't know.
They bought the building, so whatever the maintenance cost overhead and then the staff member. So probably pretty close to what our Main Street budget is minus, plus minus 50 or 100,000. But they're just getting started, so that, that budget will likely grow a lot, I'd imagine, as we hope ours does as well.
And I would think that the foot traffic in downtown Pittsburgh is more substantial than it is in Siler City. I don't know where their Welcome Center is.
Not sure.
I could tell you that downtown Pittsburgh is much busier than downtown Siler City.
Yeah. Honestly, I think one home sale would pay for a year, just in tax revenues. Just one home sale that came from, hey, you should see Chatham Park or you should see, uh, this is a valuable asset that we're, we, we really have to consider that. Oh, tax revenue is important.
Realtors, as I said, have those two offices, want to pay that.
Some of our biggest supporters are realtors.
Yeah, I bet.
You know, our, our builders, our biggest donors. Yeah, I mean, without a doubt, they see the, they see the benefit of it. And yeah, I had, you know, the town benefits through the sale of the house.
8.3 houses.
8.3, that's what we need to say.
Sell a house a month.
Month. But you all can reach me if. So. If you ever want to talk about it, you know, I'm easy to reach, y'all know how to find me.
Yeah.
No, I was just going to ask, you were talking about the downtown budget. 240, maybe use some of that for him.
Want to say that, but that's, you know, I don't want to take that from Teresa.
Somewhere else in general, finally, doesn't matter.
Take it from Ben. Possibly. That's a possibility.
Let's hear what the downtown advisory board.
Yes.
What they say, but that's, but I want them to consider that.
I'll get Teresa on.
She doesn't matter to me, too. All right, you bet, thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you all.
All right, we're getting close.
Yay.
I will need to know how, how hard you'll need to negotiate with Greg on the agreement. So we'll need some type of heads up on that at some point.
Bamboo. New town hall building project, so Jonathan, discussion.
Sir.
Am I related to our previous?
Yes. So you, you saw a town hall that I think meets our needs size wise. Certainly, I think they knocked it out of the park if they were designing a kind of showstopper town hall. From a budget standpoint, we, we are nervous about that cost. Timeline is tight. We have probably maybe a couple of months to spare for when our lease is up in our current space, or at least one of our leases is up. So I, I don't think we have any time to waste. So I'd like approval to go ahead and move forward with RFQ for public facility design for construction. And I'm leaving it very broad because we really don't know what our delivery method is yet. We're looking at design build, we're looking at construction manager at risk. Our previous lesson from the town hall on Salisbury is quickly, a budget like that can, can balloon and get out of hand. Even with this study, we said our budget is 12 to 13 to include design, and we're already at 16. So I think we need to probably use a delivery method that sets the budget, and we don't go any higher than that. And we, we deliver what we can with the money that we have. Otherwise, you're looking at a tax increase or some other type of bond or something else that will lead to tax increases. We also left it broad in terms of public facility design because the police are about to wrap up their study. We have to show that to you in October, right, maybe? October or November. And from having some discussions we've had with some other designers and some other people that, that build public buildings for a living, there's possibly a savings if we do both buildings at the same time. So if we go ahead and design both, did both out, there's potential savings within that. So we want to go ahead and get cranking on our RFQs.
Jonathan, is there a possibility that a cost per square foot, 544, to be down on three RFQs?
Yeah, we.
High estimate, I assume.
I think it is. And I think it just depends on your finishes, the exterior, the interior. You know, we talked with the folks that designed Wendell's Town Hall. They, they had been delivering buildings around 425, 450. But if you look at the, the Wendell Town Hall compared to, to this plan, it is a, it is a much more conservative approach to a town hall. And you can see that in, if you Google Wendell's Town Hall, it's a great town hall. Don't let me knock it at all, but it, it doesn't have all the bells and whistles that this design had. So I think, I think we can get it there. We just, we're just going to take a different approach.
And I think the other thing in, in support of this broader approach is one, you know, we learned that for our last attempt at the town hall design to, like, this board was very involved in the decisions. We had meetings talking about number of seats at the desk and stuff like that. Like, I think we've got to pull ourselves up to a little bit of a higher level of detail on that and let staff run a little bit to hit these timelines and, and just progress and, and budget too. Because every, every wish we make is going to affect the budget, which is, you know, intentional in many ways, too. But I think that, and, and I think that there's some more industry common methods of delivery that we can use for this town hall. That'll get us a better, more cost surety in the process.
Make a motion to authorize the town manager to issue an RFQ for the public facility design and for construction or for construction.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Farrow, any other discussion? All those in favor? Oh.
And this will include both buildings? This RFQ will include both buildings?
Okay.
Town Hall and the police station.
Right, okay.
We, we had talked originally with this firm about maybe some fire too. But fire is a bit of a different animal, not only in the design, because you've got bays and all these other control systems, but also because the fire department will be a partner with that. And really, it may be us being the partner with the fire department. So then we'll, we'll have to do that.
But the thought is like, you know, Hobbs is working on the designs for both of these now. They're both office based for the town at a certain level of finish. So there's a lot of relation for, for any form of these combination there for some efficiencies, we hope. All those in favor? Say aye.
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 Do you post? Thank you. And last open item is the request for a couple of large leases.
Yes, sir, thank you. So I've spoken with you all about this. Aromatic Roasters sent us a lease proposal, 1,200 a month. It did not include utilities, it did not include maintenance. I think they wanted a, a longer term than what we can agree to. But looking at potentially renting some space at the pop-up park for some type of food or beverage vendor probably would be a year lease at a time. That particular lease would be put up for, you know, quote unquote bid to see whoever the highest bidder was for that space. We still need to work out some details with them or whoever it might be about utilities because they're going to be the majority user of utilities at that space. Now, all we have is string lights and a bathroom that we use once a month. Now, in terms of events that go on, we typically let those event users use our power for free as, as kind of a, a town contribution. But we could work that out some, some way. So really, this is more to see if, if you all are interested in us taking this approach. If you've been to the downtown Kerry Park, for instance, their, their bark bar, that is the, the same process as this. And a lot of other places do it as well. Instead of running their own concession stands, they just contract it out and they keep a piece of, of the pot.
Yeah.
I didn't really want to get into the, the whole revenue sharing thing. I'd rather have guaranteed 1,200 bucks so we could do some landscaping upgrades in downtown rather than.
Yeah, with, with also the guarantee that they're going to mind the maintenance of the bathroom and picking up around their facility, emptying their own trash. I, I really like the idea a lot. I, I do feel that it's really important that it be very clearly advertised such that any local businesses have opportunity to take up the opportunity. And I think you mentioned something, an upset bid processor, I don't know what that is, but it can be advertised and, and publicly competitive.
Excellent, yeah. That, that's what Paul and I had discussed thus far.
Okay.
It's not required to do that, but if that's the way you want to do it, sure.
That is certainly my preference.
You only talk about one spot on that whole piece of property?
Well, so more spots could be opened up. It's Heather and I talked about this, but then we'd have to run electrical to the perimeter of that property. Because nothing to me is more annoying than a loud.
Yes.
Generator in the middle of a downtown on a nice day when you're trying to enjoy yourself.
It, it's, it ruins the enjoyment and, and it's also a, a threat to human health. And those two cycle generators are, are highly polluting. And having electrified service for any of these vendors or concessions, I think would be very important. I, I was going to say that before we got to that point, that Greg Stafford has that across the street from the Havoc. And he might have pricing for what it costs him to install electric utilities for the, the food truck that parks on the opposite side of the street there.
I think that could be advantageous if this is.
Absolutely.
It's something, I mean, that is definitely advantageous. I think if, if this is something that is, is popular and open up additional space, and we fund the electric upgrades through, through a lease. And I think, you know, I would like to see some hour guarantees in there, too, that it's not somebody taking that spot to, at, at the exclusion of somebody else or, you know, that it's going to be something that's open. I think that was originally, when we talked about the pop-up park, there was a concession area in there and it just didn't make it financially. So I think this is a good option to, to get that, you know, activate it again. I mean, I was reminded and, and got comments about the pop-up park and, you know, the event yesterday there and just what a great space it is out of a parking lot.
It was.
Temporary space.
It's a lot of fun.
Good work. And, you know, if we can do that every day of the week, morning and night.
Has there been any talk about limitations on what kind of concessions can be held there? Session stands or?
How does it get?
It'd be a trailer, right? Mobile trailer.
It'd be a mobile trailer.
Or sell whatever.
It'd have to be a mobile trailer because every 179 days, they'd have to move it. Yeah.
Could be a truck.
And when we have events, we don't want.
Yeah.
Because we open that up, you know, when there's, for Sundays, they have their own vendors there. We wouldn't, it would have to be moved at that point as well.
That's a good point. But right beside the bathroom trailer, there is already water sewer and electric. So that, that tie-in should be okay. That's why we were kind of thinking one. But once you start doing two and three, we're going to have to put in.
Sure.
For those electric services. And we had that priced when we built the pop-up park. I, I want to say it was either 15 or 30,000 and we just.
No, it's not. Talk to Greg.
During it, and it's like a sponsored event, would aromatic roasters automatically be there?
That is something I have not.
Or, yeah.
So just to clarify, it's not guaranteed that, that they are the vendor.
The vendor in question.
My point. That's my point.
Under in question, would they be, whoever it is would want to stay there?
Yeah, they may want to stay there or they may have a more lucrative option elsewhere, but.
Just wondering if they are automatically.
To think about.
Because they're a lease.
More vendors. And more money.
Airship's request about having them fulfill certain hours of operations. If, if that is untenable for them, we don't want that to harm them as a business. And so maybe we have some consideration in the term of the lease that is just not doable. I can't say can. Might, might not be the right time for having a full-time coffee shop in our pop-up park. I don't know.
Well, I'm not saying Goshaw specifically, but if, you know, open six days a week or something like that, because I don't want to be someone who says, oh, well, it's worth it to me to pay X to be there twice a month.
Yeah.
And then we don't actually get to benefit of it.
Yeah, or they're only open Saturdays and Sundays. Yeah.
Yeah. So it, you know, if it was a cocktail truck, then maybe skew stores evening. It's the coffee and cocktails, maybe, you know, all day morning, so, yeah. So I'm not suggesting to prescribe hours necessarily, but just that there is multiple hours, multiple days to actually open.
Great.
Perhaps some of that revenue can go towards the Welcome Center.
That would be to y'all because we have to do a budget amendment to recognize the revenue.
I think we should conflate the two. Is the revenue up?
Throwing it out there.
Is that enough for you to?
No, that's, yeah, that's plenty, yes, thank you. So did y'all want to do a motion on the Welcome Center piece?
No.
There was nothing to move emotional.
Yep, to the downtown.
All right. Shouldn't I miss Jonathan's, so can I, are you going to issue?
I think we could do a motion to empower the manager to.
That sounds good.
An RFP.
I will move to empower our town manager to create a request for a proposal process for lease agreement for concessions in the pop-up park.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, Mr. Foley. All those in favor? They are?
Aye.
Aye.
Recommend a license, not a lease, but anyway, we'll get to that point later.
What'd you say?
I recommend a license instead of a lease.
A license.
No.
We'll get that. Yeah, I, I got. Right, license.
I will take a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to NCGS 143 318 11A3 to consult with the town attorney and 143 318 11A6 to hear or investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by or against a public officer or employee.
Someone.
Someone.
Second. Second, Mr. Bonnet. All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All right.
All right.
All right. We back? All right, we're back in open session. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Alleged.
Put your bonnets.
Seconded.
Taking my post.